Alright, I'd like to call the immediate order and if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A roll call please.
Zachary Hill.
Here.
Chad Reader.
Here.
Leon Aron Gonzalez.
Here.
Lionel Gonzalez.
Here.
Sean Reed.
Here.
And, uh, commission secretaries report on posting of the agenda.
Tonight's agenda was posted on Wednesday, November twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at ten eleven AM.
Um, and just for the record too, sitting in tonight, uh, for Gary Heep is our public works director, Grumeluk. So welcome, welcome Grum.
Thank you. Uh, champ.
Um, next up is ceremonial items, awards and presentations. This is the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission Monthly Award acknowledging California Highway Patrol Officer Christopher Mazzelli. Come on up. Sean will meet you over there.
Alright, uh, I have a note here from Aunt Jasper from Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, and I'll add some things at the end. Uh, she says, "Officer Mazzelli is always looking for ways to encourage kids to walk and bike to school. Often he's the one reaching out, uh, to ask us about events and goals that he and his team can support. Over the last two years, he's come out numerous bike rodeos and after-school walk-in road events. Each time he brings a heartfelt enthusiasm for our mission to get kids to walk and bike to school. He brings helmets whenever he can and speaks with each child to ensure they understand why it's so important for them to wear a helmet when biking. When we're managing on-bike safety lessons, Officer Mazzelli gets right in the mix to not only ensure the students understand road rules, but also point out how much it, how much fun it is to bike to school. Recently, he spent the morning guiding elementary school students to safe crosswalk use, much to the light of all involved. His work with Officer Mazzelli is fostering a positive connection between law enforcement and youth. Uh, I'm also with Officer Mazzelli's, uh, leading educational events at middle and high schools to attempt to curb distracted and dangerous driving. It's allowed benefits to the entire community. And, uh, I saw him helping out at the big, uh, Safe to School event that we had at Glenview. And I think he's a public information officer, but he's not in for the photo op. We had to drag him to the photos because he was so busy wanting to talk to, talk to every kid and make sure that they are understanding how to be, uh, safe and have fun. So, congratulations Officer Mazzelli. If you'll come up, we'll get a photo with you.
Okay. Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. You go right in the middle. Your coppers, fancy one. Yes, sir.
Ready? One, two, three. Two, three. Alright, all set. Thank you.
So, how's that work for jurisdiction then?
Appreciate it.
Your city you can help out with, with CHPA, GPTA? Just a coin?
Um, well, no, our, uh, primary jurisdiction area is unincorporated areas.
Okay.
Uh, but again, it's the state of California, so all roads, all codes, as we like to say. So, uh, we'll take any opportunity we can get in the city limits, outside the city limits to talk to kids about biking and walking safely.
Great.
Thank you.
See you at the next event.
Yeah, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright.
Got some congratulations.
Oh, there you go. Ooh, good. Thanks a lot, buddy.
Take care. Thank you. Alright, next up is presentations to the commission. This is, uh, a time for public comment by members of the public on items not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Is there anybody that would like to speak from the public? Seeing none. Next up is the Valley Transportation Authority Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, VTA B-PAC report. Carolyn, welcome.
Um, I don't have anything else to report other than what was on my written or submitted. He news though that we will have those patterns for the, um, Measure B grants coming soon. I'll keep you guys updated.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
So you said the bike-ped capital projects, are those the ones that each city chose already to do? Is that what you?
Uh, those are the, the larger grants
Okay.
from, um, items that were listed specifically in, uh, the letter X.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Carolyn?
Uh, I just have some additions that I have in the packet that go under this, but I've, um, we'll bring you back up if you, when you can answer anything about it or if you have anything to comment.
I do, okay. I didn't get a lot of information last week.
Do you want to bring those up, Sean, during the?
Yeah, right, I can just do it right now. But you can, you can stand up there, sit down, whatever you want. Um, so in the packet there, you see that, uh, Carolyn included, you know, her update on, on where things stand. There'll be some work done in January. Uh, if you turn the page, I went ahead and put some, uh, lists of, lists of things that, uh, came from, I think, a May meeting, um, or April, sometime in the spring. Uh, if you turn the fourth page and it has some of the capital improvement list items that pretend Gilroy. Just see when it says capital improvement list highlights Lions Creek Trail, uh, VTA Access to Transit Plan, Implement Countywide Vision Zero Plan, Countywide Bicycle Network. So, that's what we have so far. We have a list of the projects and so I guess what they'll be working on is how those will be scored.
Mm-hmm.
And if anyone's interested, there's more information on the capital improvement stuff included in the packet that we have. If you turn back to the beginning, it talks about the Bicycle and pedestrian education encouragement program. And, um, this just outlines, since we're going to be talking probably about some budget items this month and next month, this outlines all the various things that were listed as of the spring that were ideas for things that those funds could be used on. And it also noted, um, that there would be a valuation requirement that's going to be built in and that Gilroy currently is projected to be getting thirty-five thousand six hundred forty-eight dollars per year. Um, and just a reminder that that's been accruing while we've been waiting for Measure B in a lawsuit. So, uh, it's possible that the first time we get funds, we may have three years of funds available because they can be banked for up to three years at a time.
So it's a good time. We don't have those guidelines yet for scoring, but it's time to start colliding those ideas and those projects. I hope Sean did all my work for that.
Alright, thank you. Um, any members from the public that wish to comment? Seeing none. Next up is Gilroy's Safe Rock to School Action Plan Year in Review. Alyssa.
Alright, well, thank you for having me back again. Um, so I just wanted to give an update since I think the last time I came was about a year ago. So, just as a reminder, we are currently Public Health, I'm always sorry, I'm saying with the county Public Health Department. We have an active transportation program grant and we are on the third and last year of that grant, which ends on June thirty of two thousand nineteen. Uh, we have three main project deliverables or tasks that we're focusing on within the grant. Um, one of the first ones is a comprehensive Safe Rock to School program. So that's providing educational and encouragement activities to the school sites, doing, um, collectively student travel tally counts. Also supporting, uh, program, uh, coordinators at the school sites with trains, technical assistance. Uh, another part of our project is a high school Safe Rock to School, uh, student leadership development project. And, uh, we'll talk a little bit more about that working closely with Gilroy High School. And the third one is doing more of a community engagement, um, with bicycle pedestrian safety. That's really focusing on looking at supporting other agencies and organizations within the community to do a train-to-train-a-model, developing Safe Rock to School route maps for the school sites, media campaign and so forth. So I'm going to kind of, uh, highlight and give updates about each of these different components. Um, so right now, we are almost halfway through the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. And I can tell you right now that majority of our school sites have already completed most of their educational and encouragement activities. Here's just a, a list of the school sites that have already completed, um, in-class education or some sort of helmet fitting education requirement. Each school only has to at least choose one of these options. And as you can see, we have a lot of schools that are really taking advantage of the education activities that we have provided and doing multiple activities. So far, we have, um, had two bike rodeos already and that has reached three hundred and twenty-three students. We have been doing, uh, some bicycle educational events like going, um, to like after-school day or some sort of lunchtime event and doing some helmet demonstration or education there. Um, five schools have received in-class pedestrian and bicycle safety education and all those schools have taken advantage of doing both kinder second and fourth grade in-class bed. And that's reached almost fifteen hundred students. Um, and I really wanted to highlight as well that Rucker Elementary did a school-wide participation. This is the first time they've done this here, so pedestrian safety rodeo. So we actually had the entire school. They, and as you know, Rucker Elementary, you know, we don't really have walking or bicycling routes, but we were able to have all the students go around the entire field and practicing how to cross the street, doing like a pedestrian safety rodeo, which I remember was very successful. Um, another thing that we did too was this year, we highlighted an international Walk of Bike to School Day at Glenview Elementary. And some of our B-PAC members were at that event. We also had the mayor show up and the superintendent supervisor of lodgermen, couple of school board members. There's Officer Christopher Mazzelli, who's also right there. And we did a walking school bus and we also had a bike train attending that school. And, uh, we had about, about participation. We did some data collection in September of that year just to kind of see what the current walking and biking rates were. And from that day of the event, you can see that our walking and biking numbers went up and our family vehicle rates went down that day. Going over our data collection, we do collect data every September and every May of every school year. Um, and so our, looking at the baseline data from the first time we ever collected data at any of these school sites to our current data, which the last one will be of September two thousand eighteen. Just noting that I am excluding the October data counts because not all schools participate in that. Uh, you can see that our walking rates have increased over time as well as our biking rates since we implemented a Safe Rock to School program. And at the same time, we're seeing common, uh, mostly common, unless all, majority of the schools that family vehicle rates are decreasing as well. Um, when I'm really looking at breaking down the data, I wanted to kind of highlight a little bit more about what are we seeing some commonalities. Um, and I'm just highlighting a couple of different schools. And if you do want to see the full report of all the data, I can send that to you as well. Um, one of the first things I wanted to mention was we were noticing a general trend of family vehicle rates decreasing and walking and biking rates increasing over time. And here's an example of Antonio Del Forno in Glenview Elementary where we're seeing those rates. Um, some schools are actually showing, I, like I mentioned earlier, we do collect some data in October every year. And the reason why we collect data there is because we have a big huge promotion throughout the school edition for International Walk of Bike to School Day. So we want to see if schools are really doing huge promotion, how is that really changing the data? Uh, and so you can see those peaks in October, you see increasing the walking and biking rates as well as a strong decrease in those family vehicle rates. So it's really showing when schools are doing a huge push and promotion, you can see those numbers increase. But then again, those numbers do drop over time. So it's really trying to work with those schools to keep continuing that promotion through the year. Um, another trend that I'm also starting to notice to some of the schools is that while we did have family vehicle rates declining, um, and they have remained below from the baseline of those numbers, some of those rates are starting to creep up again and increase slightly. And I've even noticing with, uh, this year, with a couple of different schools, we're seeing that there are increasing from September to October of this year. We normally have seen a decrease, um, family vehicle rates from September to October. And so that is a little bit concerning to me, trying to understand why isn't that I'm not, I'm not just seeing this at one school, but I'm also seeing this on multiple schools. And I'm not really sure if there hasn't been a huge push this year or maybe in the data collection, there might be some errors with that as well. Um, or maybe just simple reminders to teachers on better ways to collect the data. One of the things I do want to note too is that we are looking at teacher return rates. A lot of times I'm noticing data points where I'll see like a jump or spike and then it'll go back down to, um, stabilize. And this is an example where school bus percentage was normally one percent every time we collected a data point, except for that one particular data point where it spiked up to twelve percent. And I'm thinking, what's going on here? And then I noticed that, oh, we already received four tallies sheets versus our normal eighteen to twenty tallies sheets that year. So really is like a reminder to look at the data. Sometimes we might not have all the information that is needed to determine if that is a true, um, point that we want to look at. Um, going back to like the high school project that I was talking about earlier, probably working at Gilroy High with about five students. Um, we are, the students that I've been working with, they used to support Safe Rock to School at Sullerslawn Middle. And now that they're freshmen, some of the freshmen, some of them are a little bit older at Gilroy High. And so what they would like to do is create a, like a middle school to high school pipeline where it's supporting Safe Rock to School, uh, more of a peer mentorship program. So their goal is that they want to outreach and train the new cohort middle school students to support Safe Rock to School education and encouragement activities. And their goal is that they would develop this type of training and toolkit and project, and pilot this project at Sullerslawn Middle School. So more to what our Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition staff are doing right now at the middle school sites, the goal is that the high school students want to take over that as an opportunity once SVDC, once our grant funding ends, we can't send SVDC out to, to the school sites anymore. That this high school students would like to see if there's an opportunity for them to be like the trainers at that point, since they've gone through that program now. So right now, they're in the early planning stages of the project and they're currently working on a presentation, uh, for their high school principals and administrators. Another thing that we are currently working on, and a couple of our B-PAC members are aware of this as they've helped us out, we're working closely with also planning and design to develop maps, suggested walking and biking maps for ten of our school, schools excluding Rucker Elementary, given the fact that they don't have walking or biking, uh, routes currently. Uh, and about five schools have completed their first round of reviews, meaning we've gone to the school sites and asked for parent input and had some engage up with some of the parents to give us feedback about these particular routes. We have four more scheduled currently and I'm, I'm hoping that, um, the last school will be scheduled before, uh, the holiday break in December. Our goal is to have a second round review, um, planned in the springtime. So also planning will take all this information back, re-edit some of these maps and then we'll do a cluster of schools, um, together in a couple of different meetings and then have another round revisions before final maps are completed by the end of the school year. And I did have a discussion with GUSD. They would like to have this available to them on their district website and as well as the school websites. Another thing I wanted to highlight is that part of our project deliverables is really going out to engage community partners in supporting bicycle pedestrian safety education. I've been working closely with my colleague Martha Laura. She's been going up to these, um, to a couple of different agencies such as Rebecca Children's Services, working with the San Ysidro de la Vila group and Valley Health Clinic, as you can see pictured here. And then training some of their staffing agencies on how to do like helmet fitting, helmet fit trainings, bicycle pedestrian safety education. And now the staff are trained and can continue to provide these type of services in other future events. I think there's a couple other events that are coming up soon where now the staff will be providing this education and will be providing ongoing support by providing helmets for them to do so. And obviously, our goal is always to look for more partners to help support us with this type of, uh, engagement activity. So another thing that we are also doing is providing technical assistance for our school sites. Um, as a reminder, we have parent volunteers that are each at these schools providing support for Safe Rock to Schools. And so what our goal is to really help train them, provide technical assistance and how to start their program. We are currently in the planning stages of offering two different types of, um, well, one particular training that we're hoping to schedule sometime in February, March of next year. Is to really offer again, another round of introductory to Safe Rock to School, how to promote a Walk of Road Day, um, bike rodeo's program evaluation and so forth. So we're going to be opening this up, um, to new parent leads or volunteers, um, as well as anybody even outside of the Gilroy community who's interested in wanting to start Safe Rock to School. We wanted to open it up to them, um, particularly since I know Morgan Hill is interested in wanting to start Safe Rock to School and we really want to try to build, uh, more support within South County for that. The other type of workshop or meeting that we're looking at scheduling is more of a, since we are in the ATP grant at the end of the year, we wanted to have a celebrating Safe Rock to School success type of event. Looking at what has been accomplished, look at all the partners that have been participating and supporting the program and recognizing those leaders in our community. So we're looking at potentially a tentative data, maybe able to do that. So if you know any particular sites or locations, um, that would be really helpful for us. Um, one of the last things I did want to talk about was our Gilroy Safe Rock to School Action Plan. And I think I feel like a rubber record by saying our grant is ending soon and I want to make sure that we don't just walk away from the program and nothing happens after the end of the grant. So, to kind of go back a little bit in, how am I saying, April and then June, we had two different meetings. One of the first meetings to really talk about what, um, what are we currently doing in Safe Rock to School and what do we want to see moving forward? What are some ways that we could help support sustainability of Safe Rock to School? And right now, I'm going to bring this back up again. We have a Safe Rock to School, a toolkit for school districts and city leaders. Um, that was, uh, the Public Health have partnered with the Safe Rock to School National Partnership to look at what are some of the best practices that other cities are doing to support sustainability. And so that was kind of used as a guiding tool and really see like, we need to come up with a plan, even if right now we may not have an idea of like how we're going to start or if we have funding from somewhere else to continue on going. As long as we have a plan in place to know like what we can start and begin. So the group met really to look at what is it that's important for our community, for our schools, for our key stakeholders who have been involved. We had police department, Public Works was there, bike B-PAC members, school district, um, administration, principals, uh, parents as well, city council members, all participated in that planning meeting. And we met after initial plan was developed, we looked at a draft of that plan, revised it again and met, had more follow-up discussions. And so I believe in later packets you have a final version of that plan draft. And so really what kind of came out of that rep, plan or what we had recommended as a group was to have ongoing Safe Rock to School meetings with key stakeholders. And there was a, there was mention of having the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission take the lead on starting these meetings, possibly meeting quarterly, um, to have continued discussions with Safe Rock to School. Another recommendation was to identify a Safe Rock to School lead. As well, because currently Public Health does that lead, but we won't be able to continue the meeting after the grant ends. Um, one of the other recommendations was to apply or identify future funding to support Safe Rock to School. Currently, Public Health has applied for another ATP cycle for grant and I'm going to talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Like knowing that there is, because there could be other funding opportunities out there to support Safe Rock to School. Gilroy Unified School District and the city, we're also looking at collaborating more to initiate more school walk audits. There is a huge interest in wanting to do, uh, more walk audits after we had Mark Finch come out and visit Gilroy about a few years ago. And we did lead a walk audit at Elliott Elementary School to really look at the Alexander Station route leading to Elliott, Elliott Elementary. And I'll talk more about that too. Um, and then again for PhDs, since we have more of the background knowledge, the expertise to continue being, um, providing within our limited capacity, technical assistance for Safe Rock to School for our parent boards and leads. Um, here's a little bit more information about the ATP grant. Um, that we had just applied, Public Health had just applied over the summer as a two-point-seven million dollar grant application. It's a non-instruction grant, really, um, looking at folks servicing Gilroy and Morgan Hill. Really thinking about how can we do more for South County. Majority of that grant is focusing a lot on technical assistance in Gilroy to improve bicycle pedestrian safety and really looking at it, um, not necessarily at the school sites, but at community hubs. So looking at parks, looking at civic centers, library or city hall, looking at trails, looking at churches, looking at, um, other like transit centers where people could be walking or biking and looking at those routes. We're taking a Safe Rock to School model but applying it in a larger scale. And then there's a little piece of that, uh, what we wrote in was again, technical assistance in both Gilroy and Morgan Hill to support Safe Rock to School. So not necessarily what we're currently doing right now with our program, but how can we continue supporting those parent coordinators, um, a little bit beyond what we've been doing so far. Um, right now, we have not been notified yet of the grant application. We're hoping to hear by next month, um, or even early as January. Um, and then if, if we were selected, the grant would possibly start maybe as early as fall of two thousand nineteen. So hopefully, fingers crossed that we do get some additional funding to continue supporting the work that we've been, are achieving. Um, and as I mentioned, the Elliott Walk Audit, we did the audit in April and some of our key stakeholders that we had at the action plan meeting were also participating at the walk audit. And it really was to review the routes surrounding Elliott Elementary and assign our recommendations for those particular routes. One of the actual items that was identified was since we have a new apartment complex that was being built and really looking at the, the routes itself, if students and families were to walk or bike to school, what would be those routes that they would take? And the group really decided that there needed to be, or at least to try, to see if a walking school bus and action structure of walking school bus with families that live in that apartment complex could go to school. Uh, so our goal of working with the Gilroy Unified School District is to, um, I think right now they're currently trying to schedule and activities, but is to plan a walking school bus training with those parents that just moved into the apartment complex in early January. And Public Health will then lead to a first walking school bus from the apartment complex to the school with the goal that parents would then be taking on this and leading a walking school bus group every day. So that is the current goal right now. Um, that's all the information that I have, but Cheryl Galloway from Gilroy Unified School District is the one who's leading this initiative. So as for next steps for our program, um, I would say looking at how can we start implementing the action plan by scheduling a date, time, a location to have a Safe Rock to School meeting or task force initiated. Um, also looking at identifying dates and times and locations to do those coordinator trainings and the and the end of the year grant celebration that I talked about, and as well as identifying and continuing to link our agencies and organizations to support ongoing bicycle and pedestrian education within the community groups. And that's it. There's my contact information, I'm sure you all have it.
Thank you. That was a good report, good summary.
If you have any questions.
Go ahead, Sean.
Maybe some comments, let's see. Noted that there seemed to maybe be a little bit less participation in walking and biking this fall from the data. I do know that the school district have shifted in the way that communication was going along. They shifted over to something that's more technologically advanced, but it wasn't really in place yet when the school year started. So now there's going to be opportunity on the district website and through emails and texts for parents to get information, you know, flyers, so that not as much paper places sending things home with the students. And so I know at high school, I didn't even attempt to send anything home, get paper like I had in the past. So I didn't push promotion in that way, which is usual, and that may have been the case in other places as well.
Right. And I think that that's really good to note, too, because I, when I, when I start to see that more common with other schools, I might make the question, well, what really is going on? Is this, is this something that the community has, something else happening, community-wide, that may be the reason why these numbers are jumping up? Or again, like the communication, I know that like the websites changed as well, so it was hard for us to figure out if there's staff turnover or staff changes who we've been working with before. So I think it's really good to kind of monitor. I, I like monitoring the data and seeing like, what's actually happening, and what's a story that's being, not being told, that I can see that in the data itself. That is a good reason.
Yeah, I found one way around that, because I had the same problem, where I couldn't get the flyers on that I thought would be nice, but now it seems like most of the secretaries in the front offices have at least the ability to do an all-call-out, and that all-call-out is immediately followed by verbatim text of what the call-out was. So I'm hoping that that, that that will help some of the bike trains that I've been hosting at Elroble, so.
Yeah. And I was surprised that at your school, the only school that you noticed a decrease was Glenview, because we were doing a huge promotion, and we were able to use paper forms that time.
Yeah.
Because we bypassed the system a little bit, but not necessarily for all schools.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. Looking at the data, the comparison between September and October, I wondered if you controlled for weather, and if weather had anything to, to do with the drops or the jumps?
We did not control for weather. I could look back and look to see, the problem with the travel tally corps is not all the teachers put in the weather, so I can look to see if there's a way I can control that and see if there is a drop or decrease. I can say, we had some issues back in October 2016 because there was a fire. There's multiple fires where we actually had to cancel our International Bike to School Day event and schedule it later that month. So some schools did their tallies the week that they were supposed to do it originally with given with the fire and everything, and other schools changed their tally weeks to the week that they, that we had moved the Walk Bike to School Day. So I can look back and see if there's any type of change, or if I can find my notes about that, but that is a good point. All I can say is for this year, it's been sunny, from September and October, and no rain, so that might not necessarily influence it for this year, but potentially, I can look back at the other years as well.
Thank you. Now, now, one thing we've been doing at Elroble is to really try to tell people that Walk and Roll Wednesday happens no matter what. And, you know, for us hosting those bike trains, if it's actively raining, then we'll cancel them. But if there's, if the rain has stopped, and just because there's water in the ground, we still teach them how to safely do it, or grab an umbrella and the rain boots and still walk, because at least at that school, majority of people live less than a mile away.
Right.
So I, I know we're trying to do that, extra little education.
I think that would be great, and that might be something for us to look at, work with this, with the district one, is seeing if we can make that district why it's a walk-in, like a Walk and Roll Day, one, that's one route. But another thing, too, is even for the city to even promote it as well, as, you know, we're going to encourage everyone, the community, to walk or bike to like, school, work, if you can.
Work, yeah.
I know, I know you do Bike to Work Day every May, but if there's a way to promote more of that than just once a year, I mean, that's the whole thing, that we're trying to encourage a culture of walking or biking within this community. One, we're doing it with our program, starting at the school site, who doesn't mean we couldn't promote this in other areas as well.
Yeah, I think if we can tie that Walk and Roll Wednesday, and just keep it big like that, and tie that in with hopeful of that next A T P grant, that that could really help push that promotion of that grant, too. Safe routes everywhere.
Other comment, another, I'm not necessarily looking for an answer from Lisa, but I was at the mapping, the event that happened in Elliott this morning, and some of the comments that were going on were similar to things we've done when we did the walk audit. When we're looking at the map that was provided by all the planning and initial ones getting feedback, we removed some suggested route portions from the map because there was, it was unsafe across the street in those areas. I remember that had come up with the walk audit that we did, that on Chestnut, there was a particular street that it actually has a crosswalk, and there's another part of the intersection that people cross, even though there's, there's no crosswalk. But parent and principal, parents and principal decided better to not even include that as one of the judge walking routes, which I, I think I brought up as an idea when we were back at that meeting in the spring. It's interesting, though, near the, near some of the school intersections right next to it, like East Street and Old Gilroy, there's, there isn't even a crosswalk there. And it's the intersection right on the corner from where the school is. Also, by Chestnut and Lewis, that's an important route to the school potentially, and there's no crosswalk there. I know Christie Abrams and Gary Heaton came to that meeting, and there was talk of possible community development block grants to make improvements in that neighborhood, but I haven't followed up. Gary's not here tonight to see if anything ever happened with that, so we should check on that, as far as infrastructure needs.
I guess I can comment on that. So in the upcoming C I P budget exercise, those are one of the locations that we will be at least presenting to council for consideration, and if it gets approved, those missing connections and crosswalks are the types of projects that we are looking to include in our C X.
Thanks. Great, thanks. I'm glad you had that information. And I know we all hope that doing these maps helps us be able to plan things like that better.
Can I add something to that? What I think has been really helpful, too, is, I mean, a lot of people were asking for parent input, immediately they want to say, well, this route is unsafe because X, Y, and Z. So we have been collecting some additional data regarding that, and I think it would be, if, if you are wanting to have this information, that having us kind of pull some of that information out, what has been identified as some problematic issues, and I can put that together in a small report and share that with you as well. If that would be more of interest.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that would help, because then we could support staff, especially when they go and ask for, you know, that C I P, you know, to have some, you know, good data like that and public input would probably help them out a lot.
Yeah. I mean, at least the first step is having that public input for one, and the, and we have been collecting a lot of this information around the school site, so I think that would be helpful to help that.
Sounds good.
Alyssa talked about how she and Mark have been developing relationships with a lot of agencies in Gilroy, like Rebecca's Police Services or Community Solutions. Just want to let them know that G U S D has a branch stepping up and getting really involved and trying to do that as well. The School Link Services portion of G U S D tries to basically connect families and students to community services, and they've been getting those agencies together and Public Health. I went to a meeting earlier this month, they're calling it the Campus Collaborative, and its intent is to get different agencies meeting together to meet the needs for community health and wellness. So G U S D doesn't necessarily have a lot of budget money to devote anything, like say, to school, but they are having some people who are for them stepping up and helping to organize people, bringing people together who might be able to provide services that can help save users of school and other things.
Yeah, I wanted to just mention, I have another community I'm working with, Campbell's, I have been working closely with their school day service and the liaisons, as providing ongoing technical assistance and training, since part of that requirement for those SLS coordinators is they have to do parent engagement. So by training them, they are now prepared, have additional insulation on what St. Ross's School is, and how they can link parents who are, who are trying to look for opportunities to help support their school, they can link them to do, to doing like parent engagement around these different activities. So the goal is that we're, especially if we're thinking about like ongoing sustainability and support, is really providing that training and support to these schooling service coordinators who can then continue to be an outreach into these schools. So since Mark and I will be able to continue doing that on an ongoing basis in the future, but at least having someone who's a dedicated staff member who asks for parent engagement would be an opportunity to train them as well.
Quick question for Yerem or Ron. I did have somebody at Elliott ask me today what the status of the traffic management and traffic calming measure program is. I know that we were expecting maybe an update from council sometime in the fall, but I'm not sure where that stands. And they also wanted to make sure that any forms that go with that, not just the website that can use the local translate, but that clarify that there would be a way for Spanish language forms to be available.
So yeah, that's a good question. That's a good question. We have presented, I believe, on, I guess, twenty first, I think, was the follow-up study session for the traffic calming document. We did get some comments from council, and we've gone back to the drawing board to include and address some of their comments and concerns. But we have put that on hold, waiting for the citywide speed study. By, by state law, we have to conduct a speed study, a citywide speed study every five years, I believe. So we want to complete that and make sure that the street, the speed designations and posted speed limits are correctly identified before we go ahead and launch that policy, bring that back to council. So we're thinking sometime in February or March, it will become back to council for adoption. There was another question, but translation?
Yeah, just if that gets approved by council, if it sounds like it's probably expected, just that we made sure that not just the website, but any forms that people would need to be able, utilize that program are available in Spanish. Noted, we'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Email?
I do have a question or a comment in regards to your, your walk audit. Do you have any future audits in, in schedule?
We do not currently. I'm, what I'm really willing to work with the district or city staff, if they have identified particular areas of interest for them, for them to schedule the opportunity. I think what we, what we did for Gilroy Unified School District, they said, okay, well, we have this issue, we would like to schedule like a walk audit. And so we actually came out, we had the tools, we provided, we identified the routes, worked with them to make sure that those were the routes that we wanted to focus on, and then we led the walk audit with them. So we can do the same thing for city staff, since we still have that staff capacity to do that. If this is something that the city is interested in wanting to do, we can continue to do additional walk audits, I'm only saying up until June of, of next year. But if there is an opportunity where city, city staff was interested in wanting to lead a walk audit, and they can at least get the key players there, and we really want to have a good group of stakeholders, and I'm saying residents, city staff, really a stakeholder within that particular neighborhood community should be present, having a good group to be part of that walk audit. I think it's really important not to just limit to, relate to city staff, you really want to have all different types of stakeholders present. But we could facilitate that audit for you, and we do have the tools to do that.
Right. And the one that you completed, was, was there any like, action items that came out of to, like, for like, some sort of improvements for the infrastructure? Did any action items come out of that audit?
Yes, we do have a list of that, and I can share it out.
Thank you.
I was coming real quick, though, that's part of what I was asking about with the blocks, the community block, block grants, there, I believe there's some items that, that city staff already has in mind that are awaiting potential budget approval. I do want to update real quick, I saw an article in the paper, I haven't talked to Sergeant Stanford, but I saw that G P got an O T S grant to continue services and support of bike that education and safety and enforcement around schools. I haven't talked to him personally, see if that means that there's going to be an increase over what they were doing recently, or if it's simply allowing them to continue mostly what they've already been doing. Because that always comes up, anytime we go to a school, parents are asking about getting the police involved, and they've always been as supportive as they can, even though they basically operate on a rotation because of staff limitations, so they, they can only be, you know, a given school maybe once every week or two.
Okay.
I, I got one more thing. So T S C N, I guess they broke up into four categories, and one of the subcategories, Safe Routes to School, would you be interested in being part of that subcommittee to share your knowledge or probably gain your input that'll kind of affect South County? Because right now, everybody's involved in, except for me, everybody else is from North County.
I would highly recommend someone who's already involved with our Safe Routes to School programs, that could be a representative of that group, just because we're really trying to get, you know, as a Public Health representative, I want to make sure that we have some input from other stakeholders that we've been working closely with, and not just me as the, always coming in as the expert for everything. I can help identify a couple individuals that might be good for that particular group in South County.
Yeah, I think, I think we have, at least me and Sean have talked to one other person who's from South County, who recently went through that L C I training, that is like, wants to do something, wants to be involved somewhere. So maybe even that potential list of those new people, that, that might be something for them to get involved with that live here. Is that what you're thinking?
Perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be, that person, what seemed like would be a good, um, do you know who?
Jessica Stanton?
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So actually, yeah, that would be a good opportunity to have somebody like that.
Looking to get involved? I don't know how that would work to get on that, we'll talk on.
Yeah, where, where are these meetings? I mean, one of us could possibly be involved.
Yeah, oh, we'll share more of that in a second. Mine, mine name.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the commission that want to speak on this? Any members of the public that wish to comment? All right, see you now. Thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, next up, Michelle. Let's All Go to the Park Review and Wayfinding Science. Michelle Westler from Santa Clara County Public Health.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so this is our second year for the Let's All Go to the Park Initiative. This initiative actually started as a result of some physicians at the Valley Health Center who are looking for opportunities to refer families in Gilroy to free physical activity and opportunities. So the first, this, this, in our second year, was the first time that we actually had an event at Christmas Hill Park. So I want to acknowledge the commission, because you and I started over above and beyond in terms of your participation and involvement. This was like, the Christmas Hill Park event was our last event, so I was kind of running out of steam at that point, so I really appreciated it. So, I really appreciated all the help with promoting the event, social media posts, and just all the enthusiasm with making it happen. The partners for Let's All Go to the Park are the City of Gilroy, Santa Clara County Parks, the South County Collaborative, Public Health, and the City of Morgan Hill. So, one of the things that was really interesting about the Walk at Christmas Hill Park, which was the fifth event in the series, was a lot of people had, didn't even know there were trails at Christmas Hill Park. So, this is actually a scene of folks hiking, it was a beautiful day. And the feedback that I continually received was, I never knew there were trails there. There are really a mix of participants at the walk. There are folks who lived in Gilroy a long time, who had walked in the park for a long time. There were newcomers to Gilroy who all of a sudden were like thrilled that there was some trails to walk on there. So, it was really an interesting group of people. This is a list of the five different events that were held. And as you can see, two of them were for the Let's All Go to the Parks series were in Gilroy. The Party in the Park, Gilroy, and the Christmas Hill Park event. In total, over two thousand people participated in the five park events. Really, this is a South County initiative. Participants loved the fact that it was free. They're always looking for opportunities to engage in free events. Last year, we actually, instead of the Christmas Hill Park event, we had a walk slash bike ride on the Levy Trail. But given the construction, that's why we changed it to Christmas Hill Park, which actually turned out to be a really, really good idea. Participants appreciated having a guided walk in English and Spanish. A lot of people didn't know how Christmas Hill Park was named. So, people really enjoyed learning about the fauna and flora. As many of you are aware, there's a lot of poison oak on that trail, so that was a little bit of a risk. But having a bilingual interpreter was really an asset. We received really positive feedback. And then, also, the feedback received was, as I mentioned, that people didn't know that there were trails. And one of the things that I kept hearing was, people didn't know that they were allowed to walk on the trails at Christmas Hill Park because there's a gate kind of close to the playground. And they were under the impression that between the gate and the poison oak signs, that that was just not a place that they were allowed to go. So, it was, that was really interesting to hear. I myself wasn't really sure if I was allowed to walk. The kind of the space on the side of the gate is kind of small, so you're not even sure you're allowed to like walk around it. So, that's something, something that to consider in terms of making it more welcoming. And then, participants also indicated that wayfinding signs on the trail would be helpful. So, people basically, you know, there are lots of places on the trail where you can have a choice of three different trails that you can continue to walk on. And people weren't really sure where they would go, so they were requesting if there's some kind of signage so they knew how to get back or just where it would go. So, in terms of next steps, so as, you know, some of the conversations we've had is to explore funding for wayfinding trail signs. Identifying placement for signs on the trail. My vision would be something that looks pretty organic and that it's a park and kind of scaled for someone who's walking because it's pretty much, you know, walking on these trails. Things I think we should consider would be bilingual signs, the new housing developments and where people might be entering the park. There's a part of the new development close to the park. And then, I also think that, you know, particularly this group to consider, you know, some other things, safe routes to park connections. So, you know, even though, yes, I'm advocating for these, you know, trail signs that are very small and very organic, I think, just thinking like holistically, you think, you know, obviously just presented on safe routes to schools, but really thinking about safe routes to parks. That's actually becoming really, you know, a lot of communities are looking at that, how people are actually getting to parks. Because oftentimes, people don't utilize parks because they don't realize that there's some other way that they can get there. They just think how they drive there, not necessarily how they might walk there might be different. So, one thought would be to consider is signage from Christmas Hill Park to downtown Gilroy. I don't think people even realize how close it is. It's actually not that far to bike or walk from Christmas Hill Park to downtown Gilroy. You can see on the right, I have a photo of a sign. One of the things in that, you've probably seen this, is that it's better to tell people how many minutes to walk somewhere rather than how many miles. It's more tempting to walk eleven minutes than it is two miles or whatever. It'd probably be a little less, about half a mile. But those are some suggestions and maybe some things to think about, not to turn Gilroy to Signville, but just to think about. And then, think about signage from the Levy Trail to Christmas Hill Park. Because there's a lot of people walking on the Levy Trail and they don't necessarily know that there's another, that Christmas Hill Park actually has these trails. I feel like there's all these hidden gems in Gilroy. I'm a new resident of Gilroy, so I'm still exploring and finding all these places. So, those are some of the thoughts that I have. So, I actually did price out signs and I'm hoping that this commission might consider. I contacted Arrow Sign Company because I know they've done a lot of signage in Gilroy. For probably under three thousand dollars, you could get some wayfinding signage that I'm suggesting. So, I actually just presented to the press and that commission and I know they're also interested. So, I just wanted to, you know, bring this to your attention. And again, thank you for your time and all your help with this event. I'll admit, after two years, it was a lot more work than I thought. But I am interested in continuing. Year three, if there's folks on this commission that are interested in pursuing Let's All Go to the Park year three, we have a lot of clinic staff that want this to keep going because it really helps them. It's very easy for a doctor to hand the patient a flyer with five free park events during the summer than to try and figure out where to send families on their own. So, it's definitely very popular of the clinic folks that I work with. And then, I will open it up for questions and just say thank you.
Thank you. Good report. Yeah, I would, I would say just for myself, if you keep it with the party in the park that San Ysidro has and keep finding a new place at the end of the year for us to host the other, you know, walker, biker, whatever one, that I know that we'd be very interested in continuing to help that. Yeah, I had a lot of fun in it and I had three helmets at San Ysidro. The time went by really fast, but that was, that was a fun party to be at.
Yeah, it worked out well. I was giving out free water bottles when you were giving out free helmets.
Anyone on the commission?
Yeah, I really enjoyed it and ended up with my family, that was great. Just in case anyone isn't aware, that is kind of a hidden gem in Gilroy. I used to be a cross-country coach and because we have that hill there, buying a park, cross-country teams know about that. And we've had cross-country meets with up to twenty-five or thirty teams from a region attending the area because we have that in Gilroy. But yet, a lot of community members don't really know it's there to utilize.
I want to, I guess, point out that Sean was one of the folks who helped me figure out the trail route from all of his cross-country experience. So, thank you for spending extra time thinking around that trail with me, trying to figure out what we were going to do. I appreciate that.
Awesome. And one more thing, I'm not suggesting that anybody's going to take this on, but I have seen that there is a Safe Routes to Parks grant through the Safe Route School National Partnership, I believe, for ten or eleven thousand dollars, but a community can apply for it.
Yes, we did look into that. It actually has to be a nonprofit of five-one-zero-three and not a government entity that applies. And I have had dialogue with a couple entities in Gilroy about the possibility of that. So, good, yeah. So, I think my recommendation is to look for some additional opportunities along with to do that, something like that.
We can provide a lot of support if they need it. Anybody else in the commission? Or group? Got anything?
I just want to say thank you for, you know, doing some legwork and research with and contacting Arrow on the refining science. There's some things that I want to go back and think about as an opportunity for a partnership, but thank you for your presentation.
Any members of the public that wish to comment? All right, thank you, Michelle. All right, next up, presentation on, from Bird, Marty Fatiu, the community manager for Northern California.
Chair, for the presentation, if I may make a comment. So, we do have documentation that was submitted to us before, after the deadline. So, I'd like to hand this into the record and distribute to the commission members.
So, I'll get there, right? It's just extra, it's some additional stuff that we have.
Good evening, members of the committee, Director of Public Works, Oh.
Oh.
Oh, please, it has to be very easy. My name is Marty Fatiu. I am Community Relations and Government Partnerships Coordinator for Northern and Central California. And I'm with Bird. We are an e-scooter share company dedicated to first and last mile solutions to transportation. And we look forward to working with this body as well as the greater Gilroy city government and community on bringing our first and last mile technology to this great city as well as taking cars off the road and reducing carbon emissions and sustainability. So, I'd like to just give you all a brief presentation that we brought for you tonight. So, just a quick introduction. I'm Marty, this is Marlo Sandler. Marlo and I both actually worked in government. I think a great part of our company is our Government Partnerships team and our Community Relations team. The majority of us came from city government. I, myself and Marlo both came from the city and county of San Francisco. So, we understand government and we understand constituencies. So, I think that's why Bird has been quite successful in a lot of our markets is because we put cities first. If we were to operate in the city of Gilroy, you would have, there would be, you know, multiple open lines of communication between ourselves and, you know, the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee as well as city council, et cetera. So, let's get into the presentation here. So, what is Bird? Bird is a last mile vehicle sharing company which is dedicated to bringing affordable, environmentally friendly transportation solutions to communities across the world. So, just a brief overview of where we're operating and what we're doing. So, Bird, right now, we're in our first year of operations. We are currently operating in a hundred cities. Includes the continental United States, Mexico, numerous cities within the European Union as well as London. And, you know, when I said, we are now working to launch in Melbourne, Australia. So, we're trying to get, you know, all over the world, bringing this great technology to cities. Currently, in the Bay Area, we are operating in the city of Oakland as well as the city of San Jose. Two of, some of our greatest and biggest markets are right here in the Bay Area. And, you know, the a hundred cities also do not include the hundreds of college campuses and campus towns that we are operating in. San Jose State as well as all the other universities and colleges that is the city of San Jose are where we're currently operating in. So, with that said, out of all the cities and all the vehicles that we have allocated in these cities, we have traveled fourteen point three million miles just on scooters. And twelve point seven million pounds of carbon emissions have been avoided. Just in the city of Oakland alone, we've only been operating there for about four months. And I can tell you that over seventy-five thousand pounds of carbon emissions have been reduced. So, we do bring a great environmental sustainability impact to all the cities, places that we operate in. So, Bird is safe. This is some information statistics from the city of Austin, another great market that we're operating in, from the Austin Emergency Services, part of the Department of Public Health. So, despite scooters traveling nearly thirteen times as many miles as bicycles in Austin and other US cities, there were only, there were half as many reported injuries on scooter rides compared to bike rides. And let me also point out that these, this study was, was, you know, done during the time that we have been operating there. So, it's not like we just, you know, said, oh, we've been here a week and, you know, here are the statistics. These were all done, you know, from the beginning to the current, you know, operating times as of that, where it has been here. So, you can tell only half as many injuries have been reported on scooters compared to bicycles. Miles traveled, twelve point nine times more miles on a scooter. And injuries per ten thousand miles traveled, you'll see that nine point two more bikes injuries per ten thousand miles traveled. So, you know, there have been reports in the media, especially the local media, that, you know, may kind of construe scooters as dangerous. But if you really look into the facts, if you, you know, they can't be that comparable because we've only been operating for a year and, you know, this is what we have. So, you know, of course, we don't want people getting hurt, but we do have to show the results. Like I said, this is conducted by, you know, by the Austin Department of Emergency Services. And Austin is where we have, I think, I believe it's our fourth largest US market. So, we have over five thousand scooters in operation there. One of the big things that we have launched from a community relations perspective, unlike any other scooter operator in the United States, is something that we call Community Mode. That's on our application, which is Bird, which of course can be downloaded on the Android or iOS. You can actually report any sort of bad behavior that you see with a user. So, instead of having to call the city of Gilroy and then the city of Gilroy having to call Bird, you can go right on the app, report any issue, and it goes right to our operations folks. And if they need to contact me about something, because maybe I'm the closest person, you know, in the area, I'll get a ping and I can resolve that matter or my colleagues or other people in different departments. So, I think that's what really, you know, really kind of puts us ahead because we're able to, you know, basically be a direct service provider. You know, there's, there's no, I know up in San Francisco and Oakland, there's three-one-one. You'd have to call a customer service line, it takes a very long time. We can acutely address the issue and have it taken care of, make sure that it doesn't happen again. Another great part of our application is our in-app communication. When you first download our app, before you can even ride one of our vehicles, it's going to take you through four different steps. First, they're going to talk about safe riding, encouraging folks to wear helmets, how to start the Bird, where to ride. Of course, we are enforced by the California Vehicle Code. So, all scooters need to be ridden on the street, in bike lanes if they're there. And then, parking as well. We do not want people leaving scooters in the middle of the street, in driveways, in doorways. So, we encourage people and tell people where to park the vehicle once they're done. Another great part of the in-app communication system is before you can actually cancel, excuse me, not cancel, submit your ride and, you know, square up to pay, you actually have to take a picture of where you've parked the vehicle. And if there's an issue with how you parked it, we have warned users, we've suspended users, we've taken them off the app permanently if that bad behavior continues. So, we're always trying to hold ourselves accountable as well as our users. And going back to the safe riding slide, the first one there, Governor Brown in October actually signed a law which changes the helmet law in the state of California when it comes to e-scooters. Up until then, you were actually required to wear a helmet when riding an e-scooter. The governor signed a law which now allows for folks to have that option, whether it's wear a helmet or whether it's not wear a helmet. However, we still side on the side of caution and we encourage folks to wear helmets. With that said, if you go on our app, for only two dollars shipping and handling, we will send you a helmet right to your home. So that you have one there, it's branded, it's got our, it's over a fifty dollar valued helmet. I personally have given out over ten to twenty thousand helmets, Portland, San Diego. I do numerous giveaways per week. We were just up at the Dia de los Muertos Festival in Fruitvale in Oakland. We've done things with Mary Licardo in San Jose at these green climate action events. So, any sort of community events, the B-PAC wants us at, maybe Public Health wants us at. We will be there, we'll give away helmets, we'll teach folks how to correctly ride our vehicles, how to safely ride our vehicles, because we don't want to be here for just a week. We want to be a long-term solution, we want to be a long-term partner. And so, that entails a major community aspect. So, going to events and awareness, like I said, here's an example of one of our helmet giveaways. I believe that was up in Salt Lake City, Utah. I took the photo. Some of my colleagues there, so we give out the swag bags, the helmets, small, mediums, and large helmets. If you can't find us at an event, like I said, you can always go on the app and order a helmet. On top of that, you know, we also work with local businesses and city-run organizations with free helmets giveaway to the community. So, let's say B-PAC, you guys wanted us to, you know, to provide you guys with, you know, the helmets for some sort of event that you were doing at one of the parks. We would go ahead and have those over to you as soon as possible so you could distribute. If you'd like us to be there, of course, we would prefer and we would be there as well. So, you know, a hundred percent commitment to the communities that we are, we are currently and which we look to serve. Social media campaigns. So, we are big on social media. We are big on Twitter, we're big on Facebook, we're big on Instagram. With that said, we take full advantage of that and we help cities promote other campaigns and issues. So, let's say the B-PAC, you, you know, your body came up with, you know, there was something that, you know, some sort of message or event that you really wanted to get out. We will, you know, redo it, retweet, we will put it out there. And that goes for all other city departments as well. We also work closely with bicycle coalitions and we'll partner on the social media as well. So, we also, you know, continuously will be, you know, always, always putting out community-specific rider safety, user safety in each of our cities. So, like, instead of just... So like, instead of just doing one for San Jose, Gilroy would have their own social media campaign, where we would put out Gilroy's specific parking and riding safety announcements. So, you know, environmental impact is something that I think we should all be very proud of. We're very proud of it at Bird. You know, we're already helping cities get people out of cars. A recent survey of e-scooter riders in Portland, Oregon, found that almost thirty-five percent would have driven or taken Uber or Lyft if there wasn't an e-scooter available. Bird is great for short trips and connecting people to transit. You know, I've had discussions with Commissioner Hilton, where we spoke about the Caltrain, and, you know, how the Caltrain may be kind of, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely trying to step up in service. That's something that we could really assist with getting folks to Caltrain, whether they're going up to San Jose, or they're going up to San Francisco, or back. And our early survey finding suggested at least thirty percent of car trips under three miles could be replaced by an e-scooter. Our newest model vehicle, which is powered by Segway, has double the battery power as our original vehicles. So I've actually ridden a scooter from Santa Monica all the way to LAX, which is about ten to eleven miles. I wouldn't suggest it, you know, I mean, of course, we are a first and last mile company. But, you know, our vehicles can handle the trip. And they're also built to deal with urban areas, whether that be potholes, you know, they do handle very well, they have a broad base, and you don't see a lot of them tipping over. Economic impact. For every one thousand Birds in the city, so let's say we were to provide a city with a thousand vehicles, two point five million dollars annual earnings received by chargers. The charger is part of our business model. A charger is an independent contractor, anybody can sign up right on our app. And they're sent up a charger pack, we send it right up to them. They go around at the end of each day, pick up our vehicles, charge them overnight, and then put them back out the next morning. Charger, any charger can make up to anywhere between fifteen and twenty dollars per scooter. So it's a really, really good side, you know, life opportunity for folks. It's been very popular in Oakland, also in San Jose. I met a father in Fruitvale at the Oakland event that we did. And he's, he's kind of been having some really hard times recently. And he's got two boys, a single father, and, you know, he, he was almost in tears just talking about how becoming a charger with Bird has changed his life. It's been, you know, he's been able to make that difference of, you know, that few hundred dollars at the end of the week has really helped him. And that's something that we're extremely proud of. We want to be able, like I said, workforce development, sustainability. We really want to be part of the community. So I think that's a, you know, and that goes for chargers, as well as our mechanics are also independent contractors. So anyone, you know, if you have the skills, we also do trainings as well. We've partnered with a lot of Job Corps, you know, different organizations. In Oakland, we have done some work with some of our re-entry programs, folks getting out of the, you know, re- recently incarcerated folks, you know, looking for employment, we've brought up our team, we had a big training for a lot of folks from this organization. They're all now certified chargers, they're going out, they're charging the vehicles. So it's a great opportunity for, for, you know, for like people from all walks of life to be able, you know, to get out there, they pick up the scooters, they make a little money on the side. And they're positive, and we're all positively contributing to a city. One of the other things with the chargers is that we make sure that our vehicles are taken off the road by at least eight-thirty PM, for daylight savings around five. So we don't risk folks, you know, driving under the influence to, I'm trying to, riding under the influence, excuse me, in the later hours of the evening. So that's something that we really, really push, is that social responsibility and rider responsibility. And that starts with us. Commissioner Hilton, I know that I had sent our One Bird information, did you?
This one?
No, the One Bird. No worries, I'll just, it's fine, I can just be fine and send it to all of you after the presentation. But One Bird is our equity program, and it improves mobility and increases access to employment opportunities for underserved communities. So we connect a lot of folks to our charger program through One Bird. If you receive any sort of government assistance, whether that be local, state, or federal government assistance, all you need to do is send a receipt of the benefit to one@bird.co, and we go ahead and waive that one dollar start fee. The user ends up only paying fifteen cents per minute. We are working hard every day to, to see what else we can do to improve our One Bird program. But that's what we offer at this point, but that's definitely going to grow. Our red, white, blue, and bird extends access to convenient last mile transportation options for US military service members and veterans. That also applies to spouses of active duty US military personnel. So that would of course waive the one dollar fee to fifteen cents per minute. We are actually just in a pilot at Fort Lewis, Washington, which is one of the major military installations on the west coast. It's very popular with the soldiers up there, and we're very proud to be operating on such a historic base with some great members of our forces. Accessibility for the unbanked, or those without credit cards. We currently provide options for those without a credit card to use Bird, including purchasing preloaded or gift cards, gift cash cards you can buy at Safeway or Walgreens to use in the Bird app if you don't have a credit card. In terms of non-smartphone access, like I said, you know, earlier, we are powered by an iOS app. However, there are people out there that do not have access to smartphones. We are currently developing text-to-ride services, call-to-ride services, and we are evaluating near-field communication cards and readers. So we are really trying to make sure that everybody has access to riding Bird. Thank you very much. Also, I just wanted to see if everybody has a copy of our interim operating agreement or draft ordinance?
Yeah.
So the, the, the model draft ordinance is a template that we use with the majority of all of our US cities, especially cities within the state of California. It's kind of the operating agreement between Bird and the city. So I'd like to take this time to answer any questions that you may have on, you know, just on the presentation in general, our business model, then also maybe on some quick questions around the legislation. And thank you, by the way, for having me come tonight and, and share, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I got a question. As far as accidents, I know you mentioned that there's less with scooters than bicycles. How many of those actually involved with scooter hitting a pedestrian?
A scooter hitting a pedestrian?
Yes.
Well, if the rider was injured, we would, I mean, that would include that those results just include folks that were riding. I can get that information for you to see how many folks have been injured by a scooter, you know, just on the street, I'd be happy to get that information to you.
And then another question I had, how long do the scooters, you said you had traveled like eleven miles? Typically, are the scooters charged a couple times a day, or is it like a one-time thing?
So we suggest to our chargers, once they're picked up, that they be charged for an eight-hour time period. In the mornings, if they're not at at least eighty-five to ninety percent, there's, the charger will get a ping. It'll tell the charger you cannot put this vehicle back out into the fleet. So like I said, eleven miles is pushing it. We, you know, we are a first and last mile transportation provider. So you could definitely get around Gilroy, you know, especially the downtown area to the Caltrain. But, you know, I mean, in terms, I mean, maybe one day, as our technology evolves, we'll have a vehicle that can, you know, go twenty or thirty miles. But right now, we're really focused on the last mile.
And then it's one dollar to start it every single time?
So it's one dollar, fifteen cents per minute. Let's say hypothetically, you were to jump on a Bird at Gilroy Caltrain. You want to go down to Starbucks and grab a cup of coffee with a friend. However, you want to get back on the scooter and go somewhere else after. So you will have the option, you'll press lock, and it'll give you the option either to end the ride, where you would end up paying, or to continue the ride, where the scooter would actually lock. You'd be charged fifteen cents per minute as you were to run your errand or get your cup of coffee, but it'd still be your vehicle, and then whenever you're ready to jump back on, you can go right ahead.
The only reason why I was kind of just brainstorming, I think this would actually work at the outlets, because they're kind of spread apart. But I don't see someone paying a dollar, parking it, going to the store, and then coming back later, paying another dollar, and moving it. Perhaps, you know, if it's at the outlets, maybe, I don't know if there's any way, where you could do it as a flat fee, you know, you want to use it, you know, two dollars or three dollars plus fifteen cents a minute. I could see that kicking off, I just don't see it every time you use it, it's a dollar. So, yeah, just.
So are you referring to, you know, you, you would end the ride and then use it again like an hour later?
So have it perhaps so that if you have the scooter anywhere near the outlet's property, you wouldn't be charged a dollar every time you use it. And that way, people could go from, you could park your car, instead of driving to a different part of the outlet, you can take the scooter and then just ride on the scooter.
If you wanted to stop, you could continue the ride, and you wouldn't be charged a dollar, and sorry, you'd just be charged a fifteen cents per minute whenever you're doing your errand, and you could come back out. So you'll still be charged a fee, which is the fifteen cent fee, but it's, you know, we're not going to ask for a dollar every single time you want to get back on your ride. So that's why we allow, you know, the option to continue or to end the ride. That's a great suggestion, I'd be happy to take that back to our marketing and, you know, you know, what business operations does.
That's all I have for now.
Anybody else? Of course, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. So if I heard this correctly, all vehicles would be removed by eight-thirty PM? Is that, is that correct?
At the latest, I mean, we like to do it between eight-thirty and nine o'clock during the summer.
And it's done by the chargers?
Correct. So that's done by the chargers. Probably, you know, in the first few months of operations here, we'll probably have fleet operations up here, just assisting. They'll come either from New York or from Los Angeles. And they'll be assisting in the picking up of the vehicles, just to make sure that, you know, everyone's being responsible. But I must tell you, you know, if Bird were to operate here at Gilroy, usually our standby list to become a charger, once the word gets out that we're coming to a city, it's usually over five hundred people are just waiting to become chargers. We are, we're already at capacity. So that's never been a concern in terms of having enough chargers somewhere in a different city. When I was driving down here, I met a council member blankly around, around two weeks ago. And I was driving down, and there was a gentleman, he had a U-Haul van, and he had over fifty of our scooters. And I think he, he must live in Gilroy, because he was getting off in Dorwood. I guess he was working up in, up in one of our markets in San Jose. So that's, you know, that's a great, that's a great part of our business model, because we're able to get the scooters off in a timely manner, and to make sure that, you know, we're responsible with our vehicles.
And how many vehicles would, do you expect to, you know, if this were to, to happen? How many vehicles would you bring out to Gilroy?
Well, you know, I think at this point, you know, that's probably something, you know, probably later discussion with the city, probably with the city administrator, with public works director, with the city council as well. Of course, we don't, you know, we, we usually don't, you know, ask for caps. But we would probably, you know, propose a cap that, you know, that's comparable to another city with a population, infrastructure as Gilroy, which we're operating now, and kind of have that same number.
Okay, one last question.
Sure.
Do your vehicles have geo-fencing capability if you were to restrict them to a given geographical area?
Of course, of course. So geo-fencing is quite helpful, I, you know, in my experience, to both cities, as well as to operators. So let's say that you did not want, the city of Gilroy did not want scooters, you know, on the Gilroy High School's campus. We would do a big red geo-fence around the campus to where if you were to try to ride on or near campus, the vehicle immediately turns off. And you have to park your vehicle, you can't take it off. And we could, we could put geo-fencing, you know, around other areas that of course would be discussed between Bird and the city of Gilroy. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Can you govern how fast the scooters go?
Well, like, as a company, can we cap them? In some cities, we have upon request. I would say in the majority of our US markets, it's usually not an issue. They usually go anywhere between twelve and fifteen miles per hour.
And then, is there any cost to the city for you to come in to provide services?
There really isn't a cost to the city. I mean, of course, you know, I don't want to get, you know, I'm not a lawyer, I don't speak for a legal team. But I, I will say that there are fees involved to where the city usually imposes fees on the operators. If you look into, you know, if you look on the first page of our draft ordinance, it's usually some sort of business licensing fee just to start out, just to get, you know, a business license to operate in Gilroy, the city will be taking in revenue. So it's actually, there's a lot of revenue sharing when a scooter-share company such as Bird, especially Bird, comes in, because you're going to have business license fees. You're, you know, there's different fees and ordinance codes that will get applied, you know, if this were to become a pilot or a law. We don't, you know, this is solely on our business.
Can you talk about the, the dollar per day per scooter that goes back into infrastructure?
Sure. So unfortunately, we did end that program. However, it was proposed to the city of Gilroy when we had our initial conversation. So our superiors have, you know, have inferred that we are going to keep that promise. However, that's not going to be offered to, you know, other prospective markets. So it's our revenue sharing is, save our sidewalks. So we are going to, you know, out of all the vehicles here, we donate one dollar per vehicle per day to the city of Gilroy, or to a bike coalition, or pedestrian advocacy group to build more people-protected bike lanes. So let's say there's three thousand five hundred scooters, Bird scooters, not Lime or any other operator, three thousand five hundred Bird scooters operating in the city of San Jose. That's thirty-five hundred dollars per day to more bike lanes. Unfortunately, we're now coming up with different ways how we work and partner with cities. But we will still be offering that, you know, save our sidewalks pledge to the city of Gilroy. Because of course, you know, we want to honor that. We have gone in a different direction, but, you know, we gave that as an initial offering. So we, we will be keeping our promise.
And, and one final question is, do you provide feedback on where the scooters are traveling for city staff to be able to look at?
Yes. So one of our, you know, one of our biggest innovations that I think we've made as a company in the last two or three months is our GovTech platform. So the city of Gilroy will have a data dashboard, where city officials will have up-to-date information on the amount of miles that are being ridden within the city, the amount of carbon emissions reduced in the city. All different types of data information will be shared up to the minute in real time. So with that said, you'll have that data dashboard, our GovTech newsletter, which I believe I've sent to you, Mr. Hilton, you know, really outlines our different innovations that we're making in terms of data, in terms of how we work with cities. So that will be no exception in the city of Gilroy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I got one last question. What are the bikes, what type of battery do they use?
So it is a lithium battery.
Lithium polymer?
Yes.
No, no fires?
You know, it's, for our vehicles, I believe we're the safest, we have not had any recalls. I know some of the other companies, they don't need to throw their operators under the bus, but I must say, there have been incidences with other operators within the United States that, you know, their batteries may have caught on fire. There was a recall, I think, of a few different models of one of our competitors. That has not happened with Bird. So I can't, you know, I can't speak on other companies.
Just follow up question on that. When they charge them, do they use balanced chargers to charge them?
It's a plug-in charger. So you would just, it's, you know, you would plug it into your wall, and then, you know, you just, you just put the apparatus right into the brain of the vehicle. What do you, sorry, what, what, what do you?
Because lithium polymer, there's usually multiple cells. The batteries you have, how many cells are there?
I'll need to get that information over to you.
And it's my understanding that lithium polymer, when you charge them, especially the bigger batteries, you need to have balanced charging to detect that each cell is You need to have balanced charging to detect that each cell is where it should be. And if one cell drops below a certain voltage, if you try to keep charging it, uh, it'll charge it, but it'll also charge every other cell. And then if you exceed the capacity to charge it, then that's when they catch fire, especially when you're charging them. Not necessarily when you're using them, but when you're charging them is when you're gonna see those fires. You, you're a firefighter in experience on that?
Well, I work in Oakland, I haven't, I haven't been or heard about any of the scooter operators in Oakland, have any of them catching a fire.
That's good.
Yeah, not, not in someone's home or on the street.
And, you know, I'd be happy to really talk to our charger support folks, get the most accurate and up-to-date information on the kind of batteries. That, and like charger activities that we undergo. Uh, I can get that over to you as soon as possible. But, you know, just to reiterate, um, to have.
I'm okay.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Zach works over in Oakland and they're using them over there and you guys have heard of the fire on the crew service.
In all of our US international markets, Bird Rides Incorporated has not had a fire, you know, a, a vehicle caught on fire. So, and we hope to, you know, to keep that record. Uh, we really pride ourselves on rider and vehicle safety.
Uh, any members in the public that wish to comment? Anybody else up here or anything? Um, well, just to make a little connection on how Bird ended up being here, so when myself and Chad and Sean went to the Bike Summit. Um, uh, we ended up listening to one of the public relations managers from Bird, uh, speak. And we heard a lot of, a lot of really good, you know, visionary, um, and technology-based ways to get around. And, um, so we reached out, I talked to Bird then, and, um, in timing with what happened last night at city council. They had a study session on economic development, uh, in the downtown core. And I really just wanna capitalize on our growth and continue, you know, to pers- pursue ventures. Um, that ha- you know, that use alternative modes of transportation. Um, you know, we're a fast-growing city, um, but at the same time, I wanna make sure that we do it the right way. Um, I do not wanna have, uh, and I don't wanna see, uh, you know, scooters causing problems and us having to backtrack through there. Um, so with that said, you know, I just wanna make sure that whatever we end up doing, it's in collaboration with the, you know, the public, city council, city staff. Stakeholders and Bird, um, and I can contest that, that Marty's already been talking to city council, he's already been reaching out to visit Gilroy. He's already been reaching out to the chamber of commerce, um, and others to get everybody at the table. Um, and I think that's, that's, that's most important. Um, so, in, what I'd like to do, and, you know, and this is obviously up to all of us. But what I'm thinking is that if we make a motion to recommend, um, that the city of Gilroy enter into the operating agreement. Um, with Bird, and at the same time, the caveat that, that they need to be able to, uh, um, create the. Which you have a, you have a view of it right here, it's basically. Like an ordinance, if you will, to, what I'm concerned in other cities is that. When one company comes in, everybody else tries to come in at the same time and they just kind of put their scooters out and they just get a business license. But what you do ahead of time, what other cities have done, is to set up a permit process. So everybody has to come to the door. Not everybody's allowed to just come in. Go ahead.
If, if I may, Commissioner, uh, one thing that, you know, we also offer, and cities have, you know, the complete jurisdiction to do. Is to enter into a single operator agreement, where for the pilot process, a city can come back and say. You know, I think for right now, the city of Gilroy wants to operate with just Lime, just Bird and a certain amount of vehicles at the capacity level. I must say, in my experience seeing with other cities in these different markets, when there is a single operator. Uh, I'm not just saying just because of Bird, but when there is a single operator in a city, it's much easier for the city government to kind of oversee. Uh, the pilot, because you're only dealing with one operator, they'll know who your public affairs folks are from that company. Uh, and you'll know exactly who to go to, so it's a lot easier in terms of communication. So we always, uh, you know, we always suggest going into single operator agreements as well. Um, that's something that could also be discussed, because I do know in other cities such as Santa Monica. When Santa Monica went ahead and allowed for, you know, for all, all scooters to come in under the pilot. I mean, if you go to Santa Monica tonight, you will see, uh, lo- you know, Lyft has scooters, I mean, there's like ten or eleven different operators. Which is fine, I mean, it's great that, you know, like users, members of the public have a wide array of companies to choose from. But is that going to really, you know, be best for a city, for a city governing body to deal with? So, single operator agreements is also something that we encourage and we love to speak about as well, that all be something maybe further down the road.
Thank you, very well said. And, uh, that, that, that's my biggest thing, I don't wanna cause a problem for anybody. I don't think, that's not what our commission's here for, our commission's here to bring stuff to the table that's futuristic. And, uh, you know, make it work for everybody and, and I think everybody, including city staff, uh, understands that we're a commission that's here to work. So if there's, you know, gathering of forums or paying attention to other people's cities and bringing that back to the table. And reducing that staff time, but putting us to work, um, I know that I, I volunteer myself to be able to do that, to make this process work right.
And I can also, uh, send over to, uh, each of you, um, different names. Uh, and, you know, like contract information for various government officials in our different US markets. Uh, that you could always reach out to and they will reiterate, you know, how well we work with them and how they, you know, how we've helped their cities.
Does anybody have anything else to add before I make a motion? Alright, well, my motion would be to, uh, uh, recommend a city council that they enter into an operating agreement. Um, or MOU with, uh, with Bird.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Alright, thank you Marty. Alright, next up is consent calendar. Uh, we just need a motion to, um, accept the consent calendar.
I'd make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
And second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Hi, I'll sit out on this one since I wasn't here last month.
Okay. Um, next up, old business. Okay, so, um, is Bryce coming tonight, Robert? Or are we just gonna prepare some, prepare stuff for him?
Uh, no, uh, Bryce is not feeling well, so my percentage that groom will be. And, uh, Neron will be accepting.
Okay.
Yes.
Preceiving the recommendation.
Thank you, Robert. So yeah, Bryce, uh, fortunately fell ill. And, uh, he said he couldn't come, but, um, if there were any budget-related requests or, uh, remarks, comments. He asked us to note those down and, uh, relate, uh, relate them to the finance department.
Okay, cool. So we did this last year and, um, well, you know, basically what we did is. We had, we had our work plan, right, which has five things on there that we wanna work on. Um, we were, you know, last year, we threw in the downtown bicycle racks, um, to be a part of the budget process. Um, so this is our opportunity early on right now, to be able to, I would say, come up with at least three, if not four. Um, items that we wanna include into the, um, the next budget process. Um, and now it's just basically like an open, open discussion on what we want those to be. And then what I'll do, as I did last year, is, is whatever those are, I'll create that document. And then we'll, the budget, as long, the items need to be, obviously, uh, worked in with the. What's on, currently on our work plan, our strategic plan, and also at the same time, follow along with what city council's, uh, top five goals are. So, I got a pen, I got a paper, and, uh, I mean, if you guys want me to start, I can throw out some stuff that, that I was thinking about. Stuff that we've already been working on, um, but right now is, is your opportunity to, uh, provide that input.
Go ahead, Zach.
Alright. Well, one of them, uh, obviously would be the, the wayfinding signers for Christmas Old Park Trails. I think that that, just with the collaboration of Parks and Rec Commission, um, you know, I, 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 I don't know if that's something they're gonna have on theirs as well. But I was there at the event, um, and the connection of putting in trail signs, but at the same time. Trying to tie them into, you know, where other people can go on that trail, whether it's down to the sports park. Or whether it's to our downtown, um, I think that probably, especially at three thousand dollars, that's, seems like. You know, something that, you know, that, that could get in there as one of them. Um, I would like to see them also continue to fund our training. Uh, we had a thousand dollars allocated that expires in June of twenty nineteen. Um, and I'd like to see that continue. I think that our commission has showed what kind of return of investment and connections we're able to meet in education. Um, and that's something that I'm hoping that they, uh, continue with. Uh, I would like to, I still have about six or seven, uh, bicycle racks, the artistic ones for downtown. To finish that project. Um, I have two donors that are willing to purchase two racks, so that would be about five racks left. Um, they're about eight hundred dollars, uh, each, if, if we do like, if we do a bulk order, so that would be, you know, somewhere around four thousand. Um, the video of select commissions and committees, as you guys know, I went around to, to all those commissions and committees. And we all have a, a, a joint letter together, basically stating that, that we see that. It would provide more value and increase transparency of the open government ordinance if we were to be audio and video recorded. Uh, the cost of that, the only cost I know of is the contract cost to CMAP, which is fifty dollars an hour. Um, so we can put a number to that. And. Two more, oh, three more. Uh, I would, since we have a public bike fund. I thought that maybe that would be an idea for, for them to allocate some funding to the public bike fund. That's, you know, something where we can put, whether we set up a program where, uh, businesses, uh. You know, see any increased traffic of bike riders and they wanna be able to provide a bicycle parking spot right in front of their business. You know, we could provide that for free. If there's a park, that, where there's many parks that there are no bike racks. Um, if we get enough, uh, people that say, hey, you know what, um, you know, uh, Christmas Old Park is actually one of them. There is no bicycle parking at Christmas Old Park, uh, we could use that public bike fund to put in some, you know, inverted U racks. And I think that it would be, i- it would, if, uh, 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 these are all like, you know, sort of inexpensive things. But I think that it's also good to, we threw in the BMX pump track at Christmas, or at, uh, Gilroy Sparks Park last year. And that started a good conversation of, of that area. So, I do not think that we should not put something on there where we reach for the stars, if you will. Um, two of those are, uh, you know, we had talked about a, a bike pet bridge to connect the Hacker Pass Trail to Gilroy Gardens. That's something that the community has always talked about. We've always seen little tiny hints of it in some, you know, project plans. Um, that's expensive. That's, I mean, you could probably test it, that, that could be a million bucks, depending on what kind of bridge you're gonna put in. Um, but, I, I, I honestly still think it's, it's worth it. I know the public would love it. They wanna increase their attendance out there. We own Gilroy, Gilroy Gardens. Um, you got all those kids that work out there, as less kids driving on Hacker Pass to go out there for, for, uh, you know, for employment. Gives them another way. Um, and I know that we've been talking about it for over years of bike pet coordinator. And that would be a city staff position to support, um, our safe routes to school programs and, uh.
Grant writer.
Grant writer.
Slash grant writer.
Um, I mean, I think they could probably pay for themselves. I know that the Measure B funding that's coming in, uh, can be used to pay for a bicycle coordinator. As well. Um. Those are the ones I've been brainstorming. What do you guys think?
Well, I mean, I like, I like the, the, I like some of this, this, the signage in Christmas Old Park, I think it's, it's a low cost. Um, you know, I, I think having that spectrum, right, let's, let's talk to cities and say, like, here's some things that are really expensive, shoot the stars, get the bike bridge, whatever. But also too, we understand that, you know, fines are tight, however, you know, for three thousand dollars, fi- say, say ten thousand dollars, you could probably. More, and then more than Christmas Old Park, cause you also have the Levy Trail, which is the trails off the Levy, I think you connect it and probably even to Solar Sano as well. Creating that probably with, uh, safer routes to school as well. Um, but also too, I, I, I like that, cause I think that's a bit cheaper one, something that's attainable this year, in this financial cycles. And you probably could get some partnerships with somebody poss- possibly and specialize, and then there's other, uh, grants to them as well. But I think that's, that's a nice, kinda easy one, and then having the county, um, support as well on that one, I think is, is huge.
Mm-hmm.
And I also like the bike rack over, the bike bridge to, to gather them. And we can do it for a lot less than a million dollars, I promise you that.
I know.
Environmental effect report.
Yeah, it's, it's tough. Um, so it sounds like, so now we got at least two that definitely wanna, or the top one looks like wayfinding signers for Christmas Old Park. That sounds like a.
Yeah, I like the signs. I think, uh, funding also to do the yearly, uh, bike to work. Whatever goodies we give out, cause there's money associated to that, and I know in the past. And then the only thing I would like to add has something to do with sidewalks, either the city studying, figure out how many gaps. We actually have, if no sidewalks, defective sidewalks. Uh, cause I know that's one of the big ones that I've always brought up, uh, with regards to sidewalks, for the walking folks that are walking. And I don't know, I think that's more of a, you know, comprehensive list of actual, you know, which ones need repair, which ones are missing. And then get it updated every year, cause there's, the sidewalks are being repaired as we go, but as it's being repaired, other ones are being broken also.
Yeah, just to make sure that the newers of these staff understands, like, Bicycle Advocacy Commission actually went out and. Collected that information two or three years ago. And we're just not sure that, once new staff came on, that it got to use and that it's being updated. So we gathered where to prepare for the, we just don't know what's been repaired since then.
I think even then, though, we only gathered some areas, I don't think we did the entire city. I think we kinda all kinda just had a certain portion and we ended up doing that. And I remember we, we gave that information to, was it Henry?
Yes.
Yeah, it was still Henry at the time, and I don't know if that ever went anywhere. There was never any map created that I know of.
Uh, I, I think Groom has an update or Neuron probably does.
Yes, I, I have the list, so what, what we did is back then, um, Lisa and Henry did mail out and ask. Letters to everybody to add, let's say, a fail sidewalk, so that we can participate in the program. Unfortunately, you know, the side, the rate of sidewalk program was seventy fifty with the homeowner, right? So the participation rate in the program is not as high, it's not a hundred percent, right? Right now, what we're seeing is about twenty percent, and, um, that list is, I believe it was two thousand sixteen or so. Um, I think it's a, you know, we've been brought this up with risk management as well, but I think she's also interested in trying to come up with a new survey. Because what we did before is rating a pass or fail, right? Information is great, but unfortunately, we won't be able to quantify how much, you know, need to be repaired, right? So we don't have quality, we can't estimate based on those informations, so maybe in the next round, we'll study, that's something we do.
That's a good point, that, well, the information gathered didn't necessarily give an indication of how big the section needed to be repaired.
Um, thank you, Neuron. Um, just to add to that, so there's the. I apologize. Um, so there's two things, right? There's the gap, uh, um, in connectivity between, it's activity centers and, uh, locations. But also there's the damaged sidewalk. Um, I'm not sure what data was collected and in what format it was presented. And if it was categorized by either priority or, or, um, the level of repair needed. Um, but if, maybe we can go back and look at the data. Uh, but do you recall if there was any connectivity assessment? Um, and if major activity centers were identified?
We did, we did know areas that either had gaps in sidewalks or no sidewalks. Fortunately, that doesn't seem to be a huge issue in Gilroy, but we did definitely find areas where there were problems with that. And some of them were, uh, areas that it would be nice and more better.
Yeah, so the, the main concern we have is responsibility, since we have the eighty twenty program. And most of the sidewalks in residential neighborhoods, um, uh, about residential properties. So, uh, we could identify and create a program, but without that participation, as Neuron was alluding to. Uh, it's just gonna be a vacuum. Uh, so.
I remember when we did the study, just me, I, I was one of the ones who went out there and rode my bike and was looking at the sidewalks. They, there were quite a bit, at least the area that I looked at, I remember there was about three or four that were like really, really bad. Whereas you're walking up to the sidewalk, it's not, it's not just a little hump, it's like a foot off. I mean, it was to the point where it's dangerous. And the, and I think have, you know, do a study to get those individuals whose property. And the, and I think have, you know, do a study to get those individuals whose property have that type of sidewalk. To get that corrected, and that's, you know, someone in a wheelchair would not be able to get through that. You know, you would be forced them to go onto the street.
Yeah.
What's this survey cost approximately, I mean, ballpark to get our sidewalk survey?
Sam and Taylor did one, it was a couple hundred.
Yeah, I figure it's expensive. So I think maybe that would be the thing, is to ask for a survey, but it's expensive.
It is expensive.
Yeah, and I think that's where we got involved in, where we went out there, and I'm pretty sure we did a lot more as far as the community. Or just do the kind of media relations, hey, there's bad sidewalks, this is how you report bad sidewalks. I I could guarantee you that there's folks that keep their sidewalks clean and and in good repair, and and the next door neighbor keeps them in bad shape. And they can report them to the city, I'm pretty sure they will. Uh, so, you know, perhaps we don't, you, city doesn't have to spend all the money, perhaps develop a system in place for people who call in and report, hey, there's bad sidewalks here. You know, perhaps it was just an email. Hey, you see bad sidewalks, you just send it to this email, and then that's a good way to keep track of it. I can tell you, I'll be sending you regular emails on a regular basis. One of the big things that kinda bothers me.
And in um, in line with that, so the good news here is we are working on a customer relation management uh application. Which will allow residents or, you know, sidewalk users to report damaged sidewalk, uh, following trees and groups like that. Uh, so, uh, and we can use volunteers, um, uh, through our community partnerships and, you know, the commission effort. Uh, we can get the data, uh, it may take time, but we will have the data, but I think we need to keep in mind. The the funding stream and mechanism to actually get the work done, right? Collecting the data is uh is one thing, but actually implementing the the repairs is. Is where we actually really need the help, uh, and and it's gonna be a drawn effort.
I I mentioned our data site of bicycle pedestrian commission gathered information, but uh I know what we've done in some uh sacred school meetings that initially did school sometimes. Sidewalks where nobody invited students, and students can even be project officials, but again, that that doesn't actually have given funding in sidewalk things.
So, in other cities, examples, San Jose, when a sidewalk gets reported. That needs to be repaired, the city issues a, like a. I don't wanna say citation, but it it issues a letter saying that they have a certain amount of days to repair it themselves. Or the city will do it and bill them for the work, right? But it's, it's the policy that it's gonna get done either way, and this, if the client or the homeowner doesn't. Pay upfront for it, it is with his own contractor, the city will will cover that cost and bill. Uh, at the rate that they bill, so is that something that Gilroy has in place where? You know, m- money as far as like where the money comes from, who's paying it, won't be an issue, because the city will somehow collect that money from the property owner. Yeah. So, um, that's one of the things we're looking at in revamping our sidewalk program. Um, uh, we've looked at different jurisdictions, um, a few weeks, a few months ago, when we had a couple interns in the summer. Uh, we had them do some research for us in what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of uh repair and uh leaving properties once they perform their repairs. Um, we're looking at it, um, it's gonna require policy change, right? Uh, and create council action, um, but it's something that's in the two months that we will be using.
Yeah, I I could tell you, at least in the cul-de-sac where I live at, my sidewalk needed repair. Mine wasn't that bad, but, you know, half inch split was a little too much, and obviously, you know, depending on the type of wheelchair you're 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 using, that could be a problem, but. Uh, we all have bids, and then when it was all said and done, there was one contractor that went in there. And lowered the bid way lower than everybody, but he did the entire cul-de-sac, and just did just about every single house. And that, the final prize was probably about half, had everyone just individually grabbed their own contractor, cause he was able to do it in bulk. So, you know, perhaps, you know, uh, I, you know. I don't know, maybe do certain sections of the city at a time, just target certain sections, I know the older, the oldest part of the city zone was to have that problem. Like this area here, uh, kinda where I'm at, where, you know, it's been like the nineteen eighties. Uh, most of the city, newer parts, I don't think you're gonna have a problem, not until twenty, thirty years from now. But, it wasn't really that that bad when we did the study, it really wasn't. Uh, but it just hasn't really seemed to me that it hasn't really gone anywhere, so.
Okay, um, so a- a- any other ideas that, projects?
So we have to hand this in, is that to go on?
Well, we have to come up with a decision tonight, on what we want. Um, and then, uh, yeah, and then this will be turned in. We just have to collectively, as a body, come up with it, that's how, that's how we did it last year, that's how every other commission and committee did it.
You know, I don't, I don't, you know, dream for the stars, I I've always felt that uh the levee trail, I I use that uh often. And you go there and when it's getting dark, and there is a lot of people out there, there's probably more people using that in the very late afternoon. Than uh probably during the day, and I think it'd be great if one day perhaps the levee could be lit up with lights. Uh, cause I think that'll really, really attract a lot of people out there, uh, so, you know, perhaps if. Money's not an issue, well, i- although it is, but perhaps eventually, you know, illuminate the levee trail, at least perhaps for even summer months, or when it gets darker sooner. Cause that one is very, very heavily used in the afternoons. I can tell you, I've been there, I've times where I'm riding my bike, uh, in in the dark with my light, and there's plenty of pedestrians still walking there at night. So.
Sean, do you have anything to add?
I don't have any additional items, I.
So he- he- here here would be my suggestion, let's come up with actual like projects as maybe one, two, and three. And then, you know, something like, uh, fun, you know, fund our training budget. Fund, uh, maybe we don't even need to put in the public bike fund, but, you know, fund the training and look at a bike pet coordinator. Um, maybe those could be sort of listed on the bottom, but let's come up with some actual like meat projects that can be, you know, done. Um, on the top. So like wayfinding signage, can can we, can we agree that wayfinding signage that Christmas Hill Park should be number number one?
Yeah, I think that's.
That's an obtain- attainable, so, yeah.
Attemptable, okay, so that would be number one.
Right, and and some items seem like they could be possibly come out of, you know, budget, where others clearly aren't gonna happen without grant funding.
Yeah, like like the sidewalk one, I think the where we can be, it sounds like they're already doing that, and maybe even coming up. With the, during the CIP, maybe that's just something that we can jointly say as a body that we will, you know, will advocate and will come out and speak in favor of it. But I would say that if a department is already gonna do something, I don't wanna, I I'd rather have us do something that no one else is gonna do.
I agree, but I think we we should keep our finger on that, cause it looks like what needs to happen is policy change. Right, so I think we should track that. Um, you know. We need to see it through, that the policy does change, and there is a uh avenue for revenue for the sidewalks to be paid for, right, so. I don't necessarily think it has to be number two or three, but I think we should track it.
Okay, okay.
I think we could add it to our strategic plan, right? Strategic plan, come up some, but you gotta, it it's so nebulous right now, right, we, we wanna fix, but how, we don't, I mean, what is, what is our goal, all sidewalks paved? You know, I I agree, I think we are a bike pedestrian commission, pedestrians walk on sidewalks, somehow we need to agree to keep the the focus on it, I'm just not sure. I think we gotta have some type of, what makes it a success, when when can we take it off source?
Yeah, I I think from the feedback we're receiving tonight is policy.
Yeah, I I agree, it's a, it's like a policy issue, I don't know if it's a budget item for us, but it's a policy issue.
So maybe that's again, the strategic plan is to investigate to to.
How, yeah, how can we, how can we support the the change of a policy?
And that's, that is not the first time this is brought up, that this came out even going back when we did the survey, there was talk of that we need to get the policy changed, and and we have followed up on them.
So, so again, I think we add it to our strategic plan, keep it off the budget, but it's in our strategic plan, and then maybe we just kinda creep it up to strategic plan when we talk to city council, make sure that's always one of our. But again, I still, I s- still think we gotta figure out, so is it policy change, that's what we're.
You gotta work on policy change before the money.
That's.
You can't throw, we can't throw both of them at the budget process, I don't think that would.
All right, you work the other way around, you throw the money part, the policies, I don't have to pay for it.
Well, there already is money in the sidewalk program, so, I mean, there is, there is funding there, it's just how does that work? Would the city use that, you know, when they do what Lionel was suggesting, you know?
The the money's not, doesn't fund a hundred percent of the repair, it only, what, funds eighty percent?
Yeah, fifty.
Yeah, so just to be clear, is that the city has uh two hundred seventy thousand a year?
Two fifty.
But two fifty thousand a year, and we run through that money real fast in maybe nine months.
Right.
So.
To be used.
So we, yeah, there is, the need is there, the funding is not there. Um, and with that policy change, um, what I would perhaps suggest is also uh thinking of, um. You know, what's the amount that we can, we will propose annually, cause this is gonna be an annual sidewalk repair program. Uh, or buy an annual sidewalk repair program, and what is the, that amount of money that council will be comfortable of, um.
Allocating for?
Yeah.
So does it sound like that's something that, that, that we could put in on this budget request, so it makes it on there? Or is this something that we can support you guys when you go through the budget process yourself?
Can we get back to you on that? I wanna have internal discussions of what we can do and what we may not be able to do. Uh, and and um review the the study that we did over the summer, and what things we were hoping to achieve. Um, but I, I don't remember the details at this point, so.
Perfect.
Um, let's get back to you.
Yeah.
So I'd like to go back to the Christmas Hill Park.
Okay, so that's number one.
Yeah, but I just, I I'd like to expand a little, because I just, I, there's a lot of trails that connect into Christopher Parks, I'd like to say it's Christopher Park, Ranch Side. And the the the, basically along the the Yubus Creek, right, those, that whole area is. You know, we can start small and start with uh Christmas Hill Park, but I think our goal would be, if you get on the levee trail and you wanna make, go down to the dirt part, there's a, there's a wayfinding there for you. And then even tend to on the, uh, wayfinding from the levee paved and dirt to Christmas Hill Park, sort of thing, so, not just Christmas Hill Park, I don't wanna say, oh, that's it, Christmas Hill Park. There's a lot of trails, there's a lot of great places, and I just, I just wanna just kinda make sure we word it such that it's. It's everything encompassing, right?
I agree with that. It's it's the same thing we did last year, when we wanted those bicycle racks, we had to create the downtown bicycle parking plan, which is for downtown, that's huge. We've only done a little, small portion, but it provided this avenue to continue.
Well, maybe that, the map, map too. Wayfinding at map. Right, you know, let's get a map, let's walk them, you know, I'll walk with anybody, I've talked, we talked before about running them, you know, there's a lot of like kinda hidden trails, and I know, um, um. They cut, they they go through with the the mower or whatever, the tractor, and they actually cut a couple through there after, after it gets flooded every, every winter, but it's great, every, they come back up and it's really nice, and they're great trails, so, and more people get walking down there. It's great, I love it, I appreciate you guys doing this.
Okay, so wayfinding signage, number one, what's number two?
Uh, I I agree that the training was valuable and already fits, and was something that is already in existence, we might have to continue.
Okay.
Um, I suspect there are probably some commissions that have utilized that more so than others. But we can say that we've utilized those, our commission appreciates that.
Okay, so should we put the fun, fun training as number two? I'd really like to get in those, I'd I'd like to to finish that bike rack project. I, you know, I've I've done a pretty good job getting the community to fill five of them, and the city's contributed four. So I think that, and I, that's what I said, I said I would come back during the next budget process if I couldn't get them all filled by private organizations or donors. You know, and we we did a really good job getting, uh, you know, that many uh to uh fill it, I think it'd be good to to see if we can get the city to uh finish it off for us. Finish that project off.
Yeah, so, I agree, but, so what happens is you have a certain number of bulk order to get a better price, correct?
At least three.
Okay.
Yeah, at least, at least three, then if they drop the price down to about eight hundred, eight seventy-eight, uh, including shipping and tax.
I've even recently have been getting additional people approach from you about those, pretty, just in the last couple months, right?
Yeah, and what that'll do for us is is when when we get those out there, those, those bike racks will be able to be a part of our decal program. And remember that decal program we started, that, those funds go directly into our bike fund. So inadvertently, if if we were to ask for for them to contribute into the bike fund, if we get them to do the bike racks, they're gonna end up doing that anyways. Um, and that's a way for us to be able to, you know, provide projects back into the community.
And then, um, the bike pet coordinator thing, a lot of the sacred school work and, um, would probably fall apart without that now. And then if they, if the county health ends up getting that additional grant, uh, I'm sure if there was a position, then that position would help everything go more smoothly with what they're trying to do community wide. But that's contingent upon measure B funds and other funds, which still are not released. But if we never get a, uh, discussion of the budget item, then it never goes to work.
I agree. Alright, so here, I'm just, I'm gonna suggest this. Um, and tell me what you guys think, cause I think some of these items. I think some of these items might already come up anyways, and I think that more than one commission, I'm hoping, would be advocating for it, such as. Training, especially those that have used it, so I don't really wanna use our, sort of like, yes, we wanna get that through, if like, everybody's doing it and they're just gonna approve it anyways. And just do a thousand dollars for every training anyways, so, here here's what I would propose, is that. Number one would be the wayfinding signage. Um, number two would be the bike racks for downtown. Number three would be the bike pet, bike pet coordinator position, and then, um. Number four. Number four would be a bike pet bridge to connect uh Hecker Pass Trail to Gilroy Gardens. And since this is Leo's last commission meeting, I'm gonna throw in, uh, number five would be illuminate the levee trail. And then, um, be- below that, you know, eh, like I said, we we have, we already have. A a group consensus with other commissions and committees, it could basically be, you know, two line items, continue to fund the training that you already have. And, uh, um, consider audio, video of select commissions and committees. Just leave it as like, just a, but I I.
Yeah, I agree on those, we wanna mention, but those are things that are, one of them's already in place, and one you're already working on with other commissions.
Exactly.
Also things that affect all commissions, not a, it's not a.
It's not, yeah, it's not just from us, where we just happened to go, I just, we just happened to do the legwork. Does everybody agree on those?
Yeah, I'm good with it, yep.
Okay, alright, so what I'll do, the same thing as last year, I'll I'll write it up. Um, I'll distribute it to everybody, and then I'll I'll pass it on to, you know, to Gary and to, and, um, and, you know, get that, get that started. Cool?
Sounds great.
Good, alright, any members from the public that wish to comment? Is that, was that, was that good the way we did it? I know there's a lot that we said it, but I think once we sum it up and write it down, I think it'll be a lot more clear for finance.
I, and I think it would be good as far as keeping, keeping full on us that once you have that written document.
Hmm.
Uh, then you, uh, pass it, and then you pass it as a motion.
Okay.
And it can be.
Consent calendar?
It's already been discussed, you can be placing the consent calendar, the document itself.
Okay, let's do that, cause it's still early in the the process, and at least the city will have it, but then us as a body will publicly be able to show it at the January meeting.
Yes, so that would be have on on record that the body motioned. Yes, so we have on on record that the body motioned to approve this, right, these recommendations.
Okay, that's all good, okay, thank you, Robert. Um, next up is. Safe routes to school, I think.
Uh, just supposed to cover, but I I can add something I didn't mention before, uh. We talked a little bit about meeting how uh. Most, Zach has been doing most of our talk, most um, when developments have been coming forward, we've been giving safe routes to school reports. And he also has been uh sometimes um in communication with G U S D to see. Uh what their thoughts are on developments and making sure that their comments are included, so we have uh an ordinance that was in place. And um developments were coming before this commission when I came on and when Leo was here. Um, one specific one that came uh before us was a development on Monterey Highway, um north of Leesley. Um, and south of Los Angeles, out anywhere, ran it up, but is, there's a church, there's gonna be an apartment complex built there. Um, came before Eback when Henry Serdine was here, and uh Eback advised that. For pedestrian and bicycle access, there'd be a um rear gate of the complex, because the uh. Complex is making a big effort to make sure that the bicycle storage and the people will be able to use bikes and walk from that area. However, it's on Monterey Highway, it's near an area that actually has sidewalk gaps or near sidewalks to reach Turf Street. Um on Road and uh and Lyman avenues, um so we ended up looking it down and saying, well, there needs to be a way for people to get out the back to be able to access Turf Street. Um somehow that didn't uh end up going forward to planning commission, our comments or G U S D's comments. Um but the developer did leave that as a condition and came before planning commission, and I went to that meeting, and planning commission has approved to. Uh have that project go forward to city council and include that as a condition for the rear gate. Um it sort of got construed that that was a safe route to school thing, because it was gonna help kids go to the home school. But it's actually not really a safe route to school issue, it's a bicycle pedestrian advocacy issue. For all people to be able to safely bike and walk from that place, and also for kids to get to Southside Middle School, which is high school, which are. Not the same directions as going to the home elementary school, um. So I I've heard there might be concern that maybe having to get out the back maybe wasn't the best way to solve that, and we do have another solution in mind. Where maybe um the adjacent creek channel could be opened up for pedestrian and bike access. But um somehow in the process, I don't know what happened, but it seems like uh the things we uh recommended. Were not necessarily getting put in front of planning commission and city council, and Zach was doing work to try to solve that. And it got construed as a safe route to school thing, that's actually a bigger thing than that, so I just wanted to mention that, and say it was a school. That we do care about that with developments, but it's not just because of safe route to school that we're making sure that uh. Pedestrian and bike stuff got spoken up for.
Does anybody, any else have anything to add? Any members in the public that wish to comment? Alright, seeing none, um new business, there is none, correspondence, um they're in there. I'm gonna go over the the thank you letter to Commissioner um Leo Gonzalez in one moment. Uh oral course by commission members, I don't have any, um next up would be uh Commissioner Reader.
I have nothing to add.
Commissioner Sean Reedy?
No, nothing more.
Uh, Commissioner Leo Gonzalez, your last report.
So, so I'll bring my job, uh they have me assigned to the T S C N Traffic Safe Community Network. So that is something that, yes, is run, much done, it's it's kind of put in place by the board supervisors. And the lead of that supervisor, Wasserman, who happens to be the supervisor of South County. Uh so either way, so for this next cycle, this next two, three-year cycle. They selected four areas that the, they wanna go forward and just concentrate their efforts on. So one of them was safe routes to school, safe routes for seniors, uh measure B. And I don't remember what the other one was, so I got assigned to safe routes to school. Uh and that subcommittee is made up of myself representing the law enforcement side. It's a teacher from the Campbell School District, it is the Public Information Officer from the City of San Jose. And then the other one is a person that resides in the City of Palo Alto, and he's actually the chair of the T T S C N. Uh so we were kind of brainstorming as far as safe routes to school, so the idea is to try to come up with something so that all cities have something in place. To be part of safe routes to school, so everybody was kind of brainstorming and some of the ideas that we came up with. Was to implement something where somebody that wants to start safe routes to school, this is say, an individual school. If they don't have it, where they could go up to a website and grab all the information and all the material they could possibly need. In order to get the program started, so it was suggested that we implement something to that effect. And we decided that we should go up in the county office of education website, since they're kind of the main ones of the whole county. Um, so I attended the quarterly meeting where all the safe routes to school coordinators end up going. Uh and uh Elisa, Elisea was there too, and um so they suggested that. We kind of decide what we're gonna want on there, cause a lot of the material is already out there from different entities, and just grab whatever's already out there. Instead of reinventing the wheel, we're basically gonna use all the little bits and pieces of it and just put it on the website, so that was one component of it. And then uh, the other component of it, uh I kind of, when I went to the meeting, kind of grabbed feedback from them. Uh when I went to the safe routes to school meeting, so we do monthly uh large group enforcement. Uh throughout the San Clara County, uh Gilroy ended up having it in the month of August. Where there was a bunch of law enforcement officers here, and uh I was part of that. So it was suggested that whenever law enforcement was gonna have a pretty big event, uh to let the safe routes to school coordinators know. Cause that would be a good day to do Bike to School Day, so it's gonna be extra enforcement, that's actually the perfect time to do it. So uh we're gonna, it's my job actually to reach out to everybody, say, hey, next time there's a big event, you need to kind of coordinate. Or at least let your safe routes to school coordinator and school know that this is happening, and it should be a really good day for you to do a. Either walk to school or ride to school day.
Mm-hmm.
So that was kind of mentioned on there, um, and then the other part of it was to. Figure out who has safe routes to school, who does not have safe routes to school, so um. Reached out to Sergeant Stanford, he gave me all the info for the City of Gilroy. What was kind of interesting is when I went around different uh government entities and grabbed their info, not all cities have safe routes to school. Some of them actually had it and they got rid of it, uh some of them, safe routes to school was handled by the police department. I was actually surprised how many of them actually did that, where the safe routes to school coordinator was an actual police, not an officer necessarily. But somebody within the police department that was in charge of it, so one of the things that was mentioned is who's gonna take over the safe routes to school, so perhaps that's an avenue. That you guys could reach out to maybe the city saying, hey, you know, if you wanna add an extra person, you know, perhaps, you know, someone from the police department. Uh, so that's basically where we're at with that, uh I don't have any info on the other ones, safe routes for seniors, measure B. Uh, there was a general membership meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh due to scheduling conflict, I wasn't able to go. But uh the general membership meeting is kind of open to anybody, anybody could go, you could just show up there and listen, and there's actually pretty good stuff that's provided. Right now, I've noticed that there is nobody from South County who's representing South County, uh other than myself. And I speak heavily of South County, but it would probably be a good idea to get somebody, perhaps somebody in this board to be part of the of the steering committee.
So can you try to, can you email us, like how we could even like?
Yeah, so um I just gotta talk to the right people.
Yeah.
Cause they're always looking for individuals to be part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and perhaps that's something, the steering committee meets every other month.
Was that?
On a quarter basis.
And I I'd be curious too, and I'm sure Groom would also, like, was that invitation even offered to any city staff member? Let's say, to go up there for those quarterly meetings?
Uh.
Cause it sounds like it was open to some of them.
I don't know, it it is open, anybody can really show up, and uh you have Lauren from V T A. Uh, you have a lot of the top folks from V T A there, and so whenever we ask for projects, they are quick to say, we'll help you fund it. Uh so that would be one where I think uh someone from Gilroy should be there, as sort of city, city staff, but at least somebody. And I think this commission would probably be the right person to have, I'm kind of a, I'm there not representing the city, so I kind of have to keep my. My personal business, I'm there representing three other cities that I'm getting paid for to be there.
Mm-hmm.
So I've kind of, kind of got limited what I could actually say, well, I think this is a good idea to bring it to Gilroy.
Makes sense.
You know, it's kind of a conflict of me kind of getting paid for those three cities, yet I'm representing my personal time as other city. So, um, so yeah, um, that's pretty much all I have, that's my last meeting. Uh, it's, I've had a good time being in this commission, it's grown a lot. I remember my first commission uh meeting, uh I think the only thing we were talking about was that document that they wanted to get started. In which uh any new project that came in front of the board would have to figure out, uh when whoever was gonna come in front of the board. Had to fill out this like application that looked to me like twenty pages, and it was pretty confusing, you know, vehicle reduction and how many bicycle parking and whatnot. And then uh, and then that eventually, it seems like a lot of time was spent just on that document. Uh and they approved it, and then they kind of just went away, uh because then they got complete streets kind of on board. This is pre-complete streets, so I'm pretty sure that helped out a lot, uh but it's grown, I think it, the the uh, the commission's going in the correct direction. Um, so, uh kind of thought heavily, should I stay, should I go, um, I haven't really been as active as I was initially. Uh, you know, my work, coming here, uh is me being at work, is what I do here, is what I do at work. And when I first got in this commission, my role at work wasn't what I'm doing now, so it was like coming here and it was different, and now I've found that I'm here, I'm still at work.
Yeah.
So I said, ah, it's time for me to decompress when I'm going home, and then my schedule got busy, so uh so I decided I'm not gonna. Try to do it for another four years, so. Trying to do something else.
But I'm sure you'll come back and sit once in a while there.
Yeah, well, I mean, I like. You know, I I've always, I've always been to the, to the point where you can say a lot of good things, but there has to be someone telling you the negatives. And I've always been the one that, even at work, I'm always the one that's thrown in front of the fire for all the negative stuff, uh so, you know, it's, it is what it is. So, I remember when I did the presentation to the commission two years ago, uh you know, it wasn't a very uh positive presentation. I brought up a lot of the negatives, but I think ever since then, there's been pretty good change, and I think the commission's been going in the right direction, and I think the city has been going in the right direction too. So, sidewalks still need to be worked on, but I think that everything else is quite good, so. Been a pleasure working with all of you, uh you will see me in the audience every so often, as planning schedule permits, so that's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
We'll come back to you in a second.
Great.
Um, Lionel Gonzalez.
No, no new business.
No new business, um so thi- this, Groom, this is a time uh where we allow like staff comments, if anything you wanna pass along. Any, any staff member that's in the room is welcome now, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairperson Kelton and commission members. Uh, allow me to introduce Ms. Sheila Castillo, um she's our ma- new management analyst. You see her sitting there, if you haven't met her yet, um she's gonna be taking over for Robert. Uh and at the same time, I wanna thank Robert for his um dedication and help uh with the commission reports and minutes. Has been a great support, so thank you, Robert, um my understanding is next month or January. Sheila will be leading the, the, leading the meeting, um taking notes, but Robert will still be here, right?
Yeah, I'll be here to.
Just watching and helping out, right? But again, thank you, Robert, and welcome, Sheila, I just wanted to pass that message. Uh another thing is, as you may know, Niron, Dan, who's in the audience, in the staff table. Um, he's gonna be involved in the, in these commissions, uh attending or representing um Gary. Uh if he's not around, uh or me, so I just wanted to, uh again, thank him and uh for his. Hard work with the safe routes to school, the walk audits, and uh we hope to continue this partnership and working together with the commission. Uh, so and thank you, um, um Commissioner, uh.
Please.
For your dedication and contribution to the community, uh it it doesn't go unnoticed, so thank you very much, and good luck with your other efforts.
Yeah, I'd like to actually have one more comment, so uh, and I think it's important for you to hear that, I think every person we've had, from Robert to Donna, to everybody who came before that. I think this commission being, that seems not the easiest, there's a lot of note-taking, and there's a lot of interaction we have with them. So I think everybody from your office has always done a good job, so I've never had any problems with them, and I feel, they're, everybody's been just a pleasure to deal with.
That's all I have.
You have anything to add? Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Um, so uh future uh agenda items for next meeting. Uh besides bringing back the budget and the consent calendars, anybody have anything they wanna bring up? You don't have to decide now.
So we, it's might be out of order, cause you're probably, one is our next meeting.
Oh yeah, so we, we can talk about that too, so we had, we had discussed uh going dark in December, if there was no pending business, and as far as I know. No, Christmas Day, I'd rather be at home. It's sort of like all of us.
We can start a new tradition.
We'll be knocking on the door and the city hall will be closed, um if the, if there is uh urgent business that comes up, then obviously everybody knows. There's always a special meeting that can be called, and they only need to have three of us present, so you're still on the, you're still on the hook until, till December thirty-first. Um and you know, that that can be arranged through uh, you know, through Robert, um if that needs to happen, so yeah, so the next meeting would be on January twenty-second.
So what are the items for January twenty-second?
Yeah, and you don't have to come up with them now, obviously, but in, after the first of the year, if you have other stuff you wanna bring up.
Usually what this commission has always done, the first meeting of the year is pick the chair and the vice chair.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's always been done at the first meeting at the beginning.
Correct.
So perhaps that should be in the agenda item.
Yep, should be, definitely.
Do you volunteer?
I'm not volunteering, but uh I'm pretty sure you guys will volunteer for it, so.
And I believe in January too, uh didn't we come up, oh no, we waited until after the city council did their goals, and then I think we did ours. So yeah, so it would just be that part, yeah, okay?
Yeah.
Alright, well, before you leave, I have a, I have, I have a little something for you.
Nothing, nothing huge, but.
Oh, you don't need to pay me anything. So what I have is basically, uh the City of Gilroy's Bicycle Pedestrian Commission recognizes Leo Gonzalez. The City of Gilroy Bicycle Pedestrian Commission would like to thank Commissioner Leo Gonzalez of Gilroy for his four years of service on the Bicycle Pedestrian Commission. Your direct contributions to making Gilroy more bicycle and pedestrian friendly have made an impact, community support of residents like you is what helps make our commission successful. So, thank you very much, thanks, buddy, so. Three years to control park.
Why don't we get a picture and thank him for his service on social media?
Yeah.
Go to that, Robert?
Yeah, we get a photo?
Cause then you, you can thank him and say, thanks for your service, and looking for people to come in, right?
We need someone to fill this spot.
Exactly. Just smile, just smile.
Ladies and gentlemen, one, two, three, one, two, three. Let me try.
Let's keep count.
One, two. One, two, one.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been fun.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think everybody needs to.